If you're not feeling well, you should go home. If you're really feeling bad.
Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October 29th, 2019. We'll begin with item number five, which is the build-it-back application. Calendar number is 2017-239-BZ, 47 Dodie Avenue, Staten Island. And we received the fire department letter. Did you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Please come forward, Mr. Levine.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Stephen Levine, R.A. I'm the special technical advisor to Department of Design Construction, and I'm also representing the Mayor's Office on Housing Recovery Operations. I believe you have all the information available. If you have any questions, please feel free. Unfortunately, due to illness running through the applicant's office, they were unable to get a body here, except for a body that was running 103 temperature, and I said, "Thanks, but no thanks."
Wow. Okay. Also, "Thanks, but no thanks." Okay, so this is just a... This is an application to amend the special permit that we originally granted, which waived, or let's say, varied front yard and rear yard... It's actually the front yard condition. So, the original approved front yard was 13 feet with a 10-foot rear yard, which was allowed in the district. The as-built front yard is 10 feet, and the rear yard is 12 feet. So, I'm just curious, is the building longer, or the property is shorter?
I'll answer that question. No, the site stayed the same. But how can I say? Apparently during the foundation layout, we had a dimensionally challenged contractor. And that's why we ended up with the dimension shifted slightly.
No, but if it were 13 at the rear yard and 10 at the front, then I would say, well, it's exactly the same-sized building, right? But it's actually, according to the drawings, 13 feet... I'm sorry, 12 feet in the rear yard now, and 10 at the front. So, there's an extra foot in the building, I guess. So, they made the building bigger.
Yes, slightly. And I think they do have... I think they didn't note there was an increase in floor area. I believe they did note that, a little slightly, on the FAR.
Oh, they did. Okay, but the floor area is allowable. I'm not sure we're allowed to waive floor area, right?
It's .51.
.51? Are we allowed to waive floor areas? Yeah, but are we allowed to waive floor area? That's a question. If the floor area exceeds what's allowable, is this an area that has a sloping roof allowance? Is there a sloping roof here?
No.
No. It's a flat-roofed building, right?
Well, it's pitched on the front, Chair. But, you know, these were all existing noncomplying lots and noncomplying floor area to begin with. And, you know, under the program, they've allowed... You know, the build-it-back program, that is, they've allowed some allowances.
So, here's the thing. I don't believe, under the special permit, we have the...
It says, "Accept floor area issued regulations."
Yeah, so I'm not 100% sure that what we're doing here will be enough for you. That's the thing. I just don't know, because the Department of Buildings has to...
Understood.
Didn't issue... They didn't... There's no objection or anything. Buildings has to agree that the floor area is not increasing the degree of noncompliance under whatever that section is in 64 that allows for build-it-back buildings to be noncomplying, existing noncomplying.
Right, understood. DOB hasn't written an objection about the floor area directives to the board. But in fairness to DOB, you know, some of these homes have been going back two or three years. And, you know, whether the postapproval amendment reflecting this is actually on file with the... They had a chance to review it. I can't honestly say. You know, I wouldn't want to misrepresent anything. If we need to go back to DOB, and you want to...
No, it's not... What I wanted to say is, we don't have the authority, and our resolution will say so, to waive floor area under this special permit. The only thing we have the authority to waive is the yards and lot coverage, right? So, you're asking to modify an existing waiver that had a front yard waiver to begin with, and now it's also... Now, yes, still the front yard waiver, it's just a modification of the front yard, right? But we're not waiving the floor area. So, what I'm just warning you is that when you finally go to DOB for your CO, and they're looking at the calculations, they may find that you... Yeah, that you have a problem, because we don't have the authority to waive floor area.
Right, understood. But I can say, you know, not specifically for this application, based on past applications. These situations have arrived before, and DOB has been basically, "Well, look, how many square feet? What are you guys doing? You know, what was the existing condition?" And they've been pretty tolerant on the allowances.
I understand that there's been a leniency.
Right.
Today does mark seven years, right?
Our special permit does not waive floor area. The resolution is going to say that, and best of luck at DOB.
Yeah, that's the short of it.
Understood.
You just need to understand, okay?
No, no, I clearly understand that. And should DOB raise an objection, then I'll address that. But based on past experience with similar homes, if it's not egregious, they're like...
Right, right. We don't want to get into it, because it's a violation. It's a violation, and we don't have... Okay.
Understood.
All right, then. Are there any speakers on this? Any comments from the board? So, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Remember, I just want to add, the fire department was okay with the construction difference, that it was of equivalent safety. So, a motion to grant, then.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Item number one, new cases, 2018-178-5103, Van Damme Street, Queens. There's a request for postponement on this.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Patrick Hildup, Tarek Krensky, and Joel.
Morning. So, we reschedule this for January 14th?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Sir, what's the date?
January 14th. Does that mean there's a submission date? Or is there something that needs to still be submitted?
I believe that you have to submit, or you're going to respond to DOB's papers?
Yes, I'll be responding to DOB's.
So, you need to submit?
The submission date is December 24th for continued... An initial hearing on January 14th.
December 24th. Christmas Eve.
Well, we can give it to you later.
You can always submit early.
Yeah, and you can submit early, or we can give you a later date. No, we can't, because it's agreed with DOB.
Yeah, DOB, and we all agree. Do you need to respond to the comments? Do you want to give...
No, they're responding to DOB's.
DOB only submits one, and then they respond at the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You need to speak up. And anyway, we have... This is a postponed hearing. We're not hearing it, right?
Okay.
Right, so...
We can ask for, like, something, just to save time?
No, because we're not hearing it.
Okay.
Item number... Special order calendar, item number 233279-BZ, 4320, Little Neck Parkway, Queens.
This was an adjournment request, again, which is the third. So, we need a certified letter sent to owner and applicant, warning that any further adjournments will result in dismissal, because we've only heard this once a year, more than a year ago, or actually, almost a year ago. And that the response has to be complete.
All right, so what date are we doing on?
I just want to add something. I was at the site about three weeks ago, and at that time, no work had been done. So, whatever time we give them, we give them enough time to be able to finish the work. Otherwise...
Well, at the moment, they've been around... They... We haven't seen them for almost a year, right? So, we may end up dismissing this, in which case, there is no extension of time. So, I don't know what's going on on this application. Yeah?
I'm just here to... When you decide on a date.
Okay, okay. So, right, and so the owner's representative didn't come to tell us what the status is. I suspect it's maybe a nonpaying owner, so whatever. Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, please submit January 22nd for a continued hearing on February 11th.
And last time?
Then.
Right.
Thank you.
Final adjournment, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. New cases, item number 37500-BZ, 6069 Woodhaven Boulevard, Queens. Raise your hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond on the seat of board member questions?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Frederick A. Becker. We attended the review session. I apologize, my client was supposed to be here. He had a family emergency this morning, but I think I might be able to answer your questions. The organization which is applying for this extension of the variance is Mercy Drive, Inc. I brought... I know that I heard the Chair couldn't access the website, so I brought copies of various pages from the website if the board wants to see it. I'll explain what Mercy Drive is while I'm... After I pass it out.
Thank you.
Mercy Drive, Inc. is an established 501(c)(3) organization. They provide outpatient services for people with disabilities, mentally or physically. They do home visits, group visits, et cetera. There is, as set forth in papers, clients do not come to the premises at all. There are... This is only an office function. There is a main office in Forest Hills. This is one of the four satellite offices. There is no medical care provided on-site. There are no doctors on-site. This is just for staffing. And that is the nature of this organization. So, there is no...
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Do you know how it actually functions? Is it something where the staff sits in a place, and then they dispatch home service providers?
No. The staff... Does the home dispatch people are not dispatched from this location. This is basically an office that dispatches people from wherever they are, from their own homes. Basically, it's home health care aides who are contracted or contacted and said, "Okay, you go from, you know, you go to this place today, this place this week, et cetera." So, no, there's no staff that is sitting there to be dispatched in, you know, like, "Oh, we got a call today from Jane Doe. She needs a home health aide." You know, send out. No, this is all just... It's all done outside the office. This is just an office function.
So, if I need a home health aide, I call them?
And they will...
And they ask questions? And then they call one of their potential home aides to come to my place?
Correct. Yeah, nobody sits here, nobody... I mean, nobody comes for paychecks. No one does anything. This is just purely office function.
Okay. So, the... Your statement of fact says there's about 30 people who work there?
That is approximately.
But the occupancy in each of the rooms is very large?
Right, so the occupancy in the rooms is legal occupancy. The space is not fully occupied. So, for example, if we have... Look at the plans and say, you know, we show one or two people in an office. It doesn't mean that there are one or two people in the office. It means that one or two people legally could be in the office. I mean, I could... I don't want to put down zero occupancy, because that doesn't make sense. And at the same time, the office could theoretically hold 10 people, you know, square-footage-wise on a... But so therefore, the... We put down legal occupancies. It's similar to a gym. You know, we could say we have 75 people in the workout area. We should only have 75 people in the workout area, is what it comes down to.
Would be a great...
So, you know, that situation.
So, there was something labeled "call center." Is there... Because that implies also a lot of people, that they're all lined up?
No, this is just... I think it's what they were told, it's incoming calls, as opposed, that's all. It's not a...
No, no, no. What I mean by...
Like a telethon call center?
Yeah, no, in other words, it looks... A call center implies to me lots and lots of desks in a row, really tightly spaced. So, the... And the only thing that the people are doing there is receiving a call and putting it into a computer or something like that. And so, it's an efficient way of having a lot of staff in one spot?
I... We went through the spaces, and I mean, it's just an open space that they have for additional staff, but it's not... It's not a... They don't get enough business with five satellite... Four satellite offices and a main office, that they're lined up row after row after row. No, that is...
So, this is the main office, or the satellite?
No, this is a satellite office.
This is a satellite?
The main office is on 112th Street in Forest Hills. If I sent... If one of the pages I provided to you, the second page shows the main office. Contact us at 112th Street. Then it shows you the type of services they provide. And then the last page shows you they have different locations. One on 76th Road, one in Rego Park, with one... This number three is the Woodhaven Boulevard site. One in U Garden is one in the Bronx.
So, do you know... Are this... You may not know the answers to these questions, so anyway. But so, is the satellite office just because they need more space, or because there's a reason to be in a different neighborhood?
It's a combination of both. They... They're basically... They're community... Since they're community-driven, they are best situated within the local area to service that particular area. They draw from that area primarily, and they service within that area. So, if you live within a certain radius, you're going to call... You're going to be directed to this center, because this is where the people come from.
Which people come from?
The aides. This is where the aides come from and go to.
So, if I'm hiring... If I run one of these things, and I'm hiring a home aide, health aide, don't I want to interview him or her before I send them off to somebody's house?
Usually phone... Nowadays, the answer is, on occasion, they will come in. Otherwise, it's phone interviews. Everything is a telephone interview. References and phone interviews, emails, resumes, that's all. They don't need to see... Someone doesn't need to be seen.
Can I ask a question?
That's scary.
What? Can I ask a question?
What?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, please.
All right, so you have dehabilitation without walls? So, it appears... It states that they're there for job readiness. It says that door-to-door transportation is provided for each participant who spends the day in community volunteering, participating. So, are they there, then?
No, no. They're taken from their home... They're taken from a group home to another location.
Oh, okay.
So, they... In other words, they deal with groups' homes. Group homes will go on day trips, as one sees very often, day trips with a group of developmentally-disabled individuals or handicapped individuals, or they'll take them from their home to a senior center or a community workshop. And it's all done, not from this location, it's all done from the individual patient's location.
It's almost like doctors on call that I use for my husband.
I guess I'm having difficulty understanding. If no one's going to the site, what difference does it make? Why does it need to be local?
Right.
Because this is... They just have... They have enough need. They don't have enough space in the Forest Hills site. They just... This is another location within the area that was good for them. I mean, they... The five sites are all, if you're familiar with Queens, you know, if you look at them, Q Gardens, Forest Hills, Forest Hills, Rego Park, this is all, except for the Bronx, this is all their nucleus.
I mean, I admit that it's quite strange, but let's go back to the question, right? So, the question is... The first... There were two questions. One is, this is a not-for-profit organization? So, isn't this a not-for... A use group? What is that for?
It's a use group for however... Okay, in going to... That was the next question. On pursuant to Section 22-14 zoning resolution, which I also brought copies, within the R5 zone, you are... And I can hand those out as well, if you want to see them. You... A... Within the R5 zone, it says, "Except that, you can..." The amount of floor area used for central office purposes shall in no event exceed 25% of the total floor area. And we occupy 100% of the total.
No, no, but so you're... This is in central office. This is what you do. So, I had this conversation about another very similar site, where actually, they were going to come here for one of our special permits, and it turns out, they could just build it as a... Right? Because it's what you... It's what they do, right? Central office function is like the bookkeeper, the, you know, the in-house counsel, the paper pushers, right? These people aren't paper pushing. They're talking to clients, and they're talking to caseworkers. And without those conversations, there isn't an entity.
I...
So, it's not central office function?
Well, that's... Since it is... I'm not disagreeing, but since central office is not a defined term, I take central... My understanding would be that central office is central office. And since I'm not able... The DOB no longer gives opinions, declaratory opinions, short of a CCD1 or a ZRD1. So, as anyone, I could speak to it, DOB, to find it out. My reading of the zoning resolution, and I could be wrong, took it as all office functions, not central, because, I mean, they do what they do in this location. It's office functions. So, I'm not disagreeing. I just... That's how I read it. If the board can reach out to DOB.
So, we don't necessarily have to get into this, but there's no question that there are many, many kinds of not-for-profits who do what they do by being in an office. Many, many, many kinds, that don't have an activity, right? I mean, you know, like the Ford Foundation, Foundations, for example. All it is, is about giving money, right? Filled with underwriters, accountants, all of that stuff. It's a not-for-profit organization. Its job is to give out money, right? So, yeah, so according to that. But anyway, we don't have to belabor this. It's just whether or not the variance is necessary, and whether or not it was even necessary to come here relative to the amendment, because the prior variance was for a use group six, right? So, I don't know what people's... Because it's both an extension of term, and it's described in your statement of fact as an amendment, because of the different change in occupant, right? So, I don't know.
I'm looking at use group three and use group four, and trying to understand how... Which category this would fall into.
Well, but they're saying it's use group six.
Right. And I'm looking at three and four. I think, given that it's not providing, let's say, a nonprofit hospital service...
No, it's a not-for-profit without sleeping accommodation.
But not-for-profit... I'm looking at it. But you can give it to me.
I believe that's three. Yeah. Right? Not-for-profit without sleeping accommodation.
That's four. That's the second page.
So, noncommercial, not-for-profits, not dwelling monasteries and similar.
Not-for-profit without sleeping accommodation. Thanks.
No, that is... This is three. You handed out three.
No, he handed out four. Oh, I got four.
I handed out four.
I have three. This is three.
No, I have four.
The first page is four. Philanthro... I'm just going to read it, so we speed this up. Not philanthropic or nonprofit institution without sleeping accommodations, excluding ambulatory diagnostic or treatment healthcare facilities listed in use group four, provided that the number of persons employed in central office function shall not exceed 50, and the amount of floor area used for central office purposes shall not exceed 25% of the total floor area, or 25,000 square feet, whichever is greater. So, actually, that's a lot, 25. Except that, in R5, the amount of floor area used for central office purposes shall in no event exceed 25% of the floor area, which is what Mr. Becker said. It's all true. So, but the question is, so it could eat... So, from my perspective, to not belabor this, the Buildings Department has told us in several different situations that you have an option of calling your space use group six or use group four. It's like your choice. The same for medical offices in particular, because that's where it comes up the most, right? Medical offices are often use group three, I believe, use group three or use group four. And you have that option to switch between. And so, I'm... They're opting for use group six, which is a continuity on the variance. So, I'm personally okay with continuing it. The board seemed to have dropped its concern about use group sixes on this site. Originally, they were trying to restrict it to low-traffic-producing use group six offices. But at the last version, they didn't restrict it. So, maybe there was no testimony in opposition to traffic? I don't know. Are there any speakers on this case? No?
If I may, just for what it's... At the community board meeting, the Chair of the Land Use Committee, who happens to live around the corner, said this has been the quietest use they've had. I mean, the first use was a rental office, which had people coming back and forth, paying rent.
Real estate office, right?
Right. Another office was the TV people for the hotel, and people were coming in and out in trucks and blah, blah, blah. This one is the quietest use, the cleanest use. They has... Usually, the parking spaces are never even fully occupied. They, you know, thrilled as pieces. It was in and out, and thank you very much, absolutely. So, Jess, I'm just sharing that.
So, you know what? Only because it's a little bit of a remnant from before, maybe what we could just do is have a condition that the use group six use... Because I don't think you should have to come back here every single time you change the occupancy if it's use group six. The use group six use has to be something that produces very little traffic or parking and traffic needs, something like that. So, low-intensity parking, traffic use. And I don't leave it at that. Does that sound enough?
No term is...
What?
No term? A term?
Adjourn...
Term.
A term, yeah, yeah. So, and there was a term on it for whatever. I think the community just wanted to be able to keep its eye on this use. I don't have a problem with that. The term before was...
10 years.
10 years?
10 and 10.
Yeah. So, fire department has something?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is John Daly. I'm testifying as a member of the public. I live down the block from the office. And as Mr. Becker mentioned, when it was a real estate office, we had a lot of traffic. when it was a real estate office, we had a lot of traffic. Now, the Medicare, they've been very good neighbors and they kept the site clean. Not many cars, maximum of eight that I've overseen. You know, take up our parking. So, I, now as a member of the public, I support the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gee.
I'm okay with it, but there are certain uses within use group six B and C, you know, that may create more trap.
No, 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 no. Use group six office. That's what the grant was.
We're happy with office.
Yeah, yeah. No, the grant was office.
Office, just pure office. Six B. No C.
Okay. Okay. All right. And so, I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair pro-mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant for a 10-year term, a use group six office.
Chair pro-mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you this afternoon.
Thank you.
Item number four, 34312BZ, 570 East 21st Street, Brooklyn. You only one here?
One.
Okay. You got my email yesterday? Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I just state your name and I want to say something before you get started.
Ben Stark for Slater &amp; Beckerman on behalf of Ocean Avenue Education Support, Inc.
Ocean Avenue what?
Education Support Incorporated.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure because I don't want to frighten anybody. This is 570 East 21st Street, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we received over 70 letters and I think it actually might be closer to 80 basis points as they keep coming in. Letters of opposition to this application. Most of the letters, in fact, really all of them, say the same thing. So, it's kind of a repeat format letter, but it's from many, many, many different people. And it states that the entity originally associated with the application is no longer involved in this project and says the owner signed a lease with a rehab and care center. I need to remind that this was a variance for a school under the Cornell Doctrine. And the second it stops being a school, there's no variance. So, you need to respond to these assertions by the community, by a lot of the community. And you don't have to do it right in front of us. You can go back and find out what's going on.
No, I will respond to that, at least in part, this morning. So, again, Ben Stark for Slater &amp; Beckerman PC on behalf of Ocean Avenue Education Support Incorporated. We attended yesterday's executive session briefly and also watched yesterday's video of the executive session. First point that was brought up was about the community board referral. Yes, we referred this to the community board because of the opposition when the project was originally approved by the board. We wanted to have full disclosure. And last night, we appeared at the community board for a public hearing where the community board voted to recommend approval of an extension of time to complete construction. Now, that's not to say that there weren't, there wasn't opposition in the room bringing up points of opposition, including what you had just mentioned. So, to your, to that particular point, which staff of the BSA had sent us a copy of a letter of opposition referencing this lease, I've spoken with our client and that it's, to our knowledge and their knowledge, it's not true. The same entity that had owned the property at the time of the 2015 application remains the owner and there is no lease to a care facility. That is what we've been told. There is a, an existing building on the property that will be, on one of the three properties that constitutes the development site. And while the applicant is-
Sorry, I looked that up. I thought the demo was signed off.
I believe that there's multiple sites. There might be demo sign-off on one of the properties, but there is still a building on the site. It is possible that the lease is in reference to a month-to-month lease of someone in that residential building. But no, there is not a new entity that is planning to develop a singular healthcare use on this development site.
Can, is your client here?
No, they could not make it today.
So, can we get some kind of submission from your client?
That's where I'm going with this. To the primary comment made yesterday at executive session regarding the status of the rate-setting application, that absolutely, we need to follow up with a written submission, providing the board more detail as to the status of that application with the Department of Education. And we will do so after this hearing. The other points that were brought up yesterday, I think there's a question about what, quote, "continuous filing" meant. It's a simple answer. It's similar to, from what I've been told, it's similar to the process that we have here at the BSA. You make an application, you get comments, you revise your application. That that's the process that they've been in with the rate-setting unit. It's a continuous process of making submissions. Comments are made by the DOE. The program gets refined. I think the-
By the DOB?
DOE, sorry.
Oh, DOE.
I think, to add just a little color, that it's not one singular application to the rate-setting unit at DOE. It's a, it's a series of applications broken out by age group and even different departments, like math, seven through 12, English, different age classifications. So, it's a lot. And what has complicated the matter for the client in the last four years, because I know that was raised yesterday, well, what, is this been a full-time job by the applicant? Is that there had been an individual whose primary, whose full-time job was this process and in halfway, about a year, a little more than a year into following the original grant, that person took a job elsewhere and they underestimated how difficult it would be to find a qualified replacement. And so, there was a period of time in the last four years where they were, where they had to find a new principal for the school for when it opens. And that person's wearing two hats, both the future principal and the person handling this back and forth with DOE. So, that really is a major caveat in this whole process. That, from what I can... Oh, there was one other comment regarding the containers. Yes, absolutely, that those will be removed. I've been told by our client that they're in the process of doing that. So, before I come back, before this board, they will be gone.
And you could send us photos showing their removal?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I'm still having trouble with this. Why is the rate setting? That's why I really would like to see your client at this hearing so we can get direct answers because I know you can't possibly know what this is. I don't understand what the rate setting has to do with planning the building and what the rate setting has to do with getting financing because you just look at, for the financing purposes, you look at, say, I know this is an unusual facility, but you look at similar kinds of facilities and you say, this is what New York State has permitted this year. You know, we'll assume that number in a worst-case scenario. And if we're lucky, they'll give us more. In which case, let's just say, you get a 15% increase. So, it's a range of this and that. I don't understand the idea that you're, that they wait for four years of back-and-forthing with the Department of Education and do nothing else. There's no signs that any drawings are done. There's no sign that, yeah, that nothing was filed. I actually don't get that. So, that seems to me, from our perspective, like sitting on your rights. And at a certain point, we're not going to be able to issue these extensions because a variance becomes kind of moot by that point.
I understand the question. And again, we will respond in more detail in writing. The, I will say that our client, the applicant, has every intention on getting this building built. It is in their, they're, both in their mission interest and in their economic interest to see that this is completed. And we know that once this building is completed, some of the concerns of the immediate community members, the members of the community that are very close by to this site, that the condition will be better for them once, obviously, once this building is built. So, we want to see that through, not just for us, but for them. So, yeah, we will respond with more detail.
Please come with your client the next time. Somebody who's knowledgeable about the project with authority to respond, okay? Not just kind of anybody from wherever, right? Sometimes we get some, anybody from wherever. Okay. Other, any other questions from the board? Are there speakers on this?
The neighbors, their neighbors. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
I'm ready to testify.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Harry Bobbins. I'm here in the capacity as a member of Respect Brooklyn, an organization local to the neighborhood. And I reviewed the executive session yesterday. Forgive my notes. I was at the community board last night in the split vote. An enormous amount of the community came out. And I also looked at the 2015 and other years of YouTube testimony that your tech team has on board and commend the board for the enormous amount of work you did at the time to even coddle this application to any semblance of respectability. I don't want to litigate the issues that the residents brought up because the chair cut to the chase that if it's not a school, it's not a variance. And the board last night in their approval said they have no authority, they have no technique, they have no resources to examine that issue, and that's why they voted to approve it, not because they believed that it was still a school. So, what you have here, and I'll go back over it, is from ACRES. You know, they have borrowed $37 million on this project through a series of LLCs. So, you asked about financing. $37 million is plenty of money. One of the mortgage, the sundry agreement references a lease between the owner, whether it's an LLC or a religious entity that popped into the records with Dittmas Park Rehabilitation and Care Center. So, that alone, I think, shows this is not a school. The community at the time was correct in saying it was a 24/7 medical facility and it should not be going through this process, even if the people in the community might support such a thing. This isn't the proper venue. You already cited Cornell versus Bagnari, and if it's not a school, then you also have to look at the unique conditions of the lot, which obviously are, there are no unique conditions there. So, let's go back in time a little. The LLC bought the building in 2010. Colell Beis Yakov LLC for $130,000. An application to the DOB for a new building permit was made two years later. And who signed that application? As owner, according to BIS, Ocean Avenue Education Support Incorporated. According to New York Board of Regents, according to New York charities, according to IRS, I saw no such organization. Later on, some other owner filed a demolition permit. This time, it was in the name of the LLC that originally purchased the building, representing themselves as the owner. Then you had the BSA application and the decision was made in the name of Brooklyn School for Medically Frail Children. According to the Foundation Center for the Years 2016, 2017, 2018, they have no assets, no employees, no volunteers. Although we heard tonight there was an employee or something working on this project. This is all public records. They're footnoted in my testimony. After the, right after the BSA approved that variance, the LLC took out a loan for $2 million on the three properties, but not in the name of a school, in the name of LaSante Health Center Incorporated at that time. At the same time, a subordination of mortgage was filed by Colell Beis Yakov, this time not as an LLC, but as a religious institution. Later on, the sundry agreement, as I mentioned, was filed regarding the mortgage that makes note of a lease agreement between the owner of the property and the Dittmas Park Rehabilitation and Care Center. It's footnoted there. Five months later, in July 17, according to public records, a collateral mortgage was filed in the amount of over $35 million, not to a school, not to the original LLC, but to another LLC, Dithold Associates LLC, who happened to have, according to these records, the same address as Dittmas Park Rehab Care Center and Nursing Care Facility located at 2107 Dittmas Avenue, which happens to be undergoing a five-star renovation and is an appropriate location for this use. That was a construction mortgage. So, as you, we want to litigate all the 40 parking lots, the 40-car parking lots, all of that. It's not a school. It never was a school. All of these dealings, I don't understand why it's happening, but we hope the board denies this renewal and makes them go back to the drawing board if they want a non-conforming use there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other speakers on this one? Okay. So, you're not going to be able to answer those questions, but it's fair, you know? There were a lot, there was a lot of concern at the original variance hearing about how this building was going to be used. And there was, there were assertions that it wasn't going to be a school, right? So, now it's sort of resurrecting those same concerns. So, your client, and it has to be your client, has to respond to those and you need to, they need to get their act together. Because I, you know, what we know from Corporation Law 101, you're not supposed to be merging corporations and piercing corporate veils and treating one corporation as if it's another corporation. It is, it either is or it isn't, right? Okay. And we don't, you know, we do see sometimes situation where like a religious institution will own the property for the future school, for example. Or an individual will own the property for a future religious institution. But then we see that, from the records, that that person, that individual, is a, you know, is a high-level member on that religious organization and is going to be donating the property. Or the property had to be purchased by an existing, by an actual entity and the religious institution didn't, wasn't an entity formed yet, that kind of thing. We see those. But you need to explain this because it's not really looking like that. And then the claim that they couldn't get money and therefore they couldn't start without it, that also doesn't make any sense now. So, apparently, they could get money. So, then I don't understand what the reason for the delay is. It can't all be without rate setting.
Well, we'll respond with more detail about, about the construction financing as that is central to what has been hanging this up. So, we will respond.
Okay. So, what I would suggest, rather than just respond to what you just said, have your client listen to the testimony from the neighbor and respond to all of those issues. And don't ignore them because they're raised.
Of course.
They need to be responded to. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. They would also need to explain all of these filings on ACRES, these recorded documents, as to... Is there at least, there's a great deal of filed documents on ACRES that really question what this property is being used for. Of course. I would say it's not being used for anything right now other than it's set to be a development site for the project as approved in 2015. But the points raised by the community member are, need to be responded to and we will respond and the applicant will be here at the next year.
Right. But, you know, to put back into perspective, we can't consider an application for a seven, for a variance under the Cornell Doctrine that doesn't come from a school, right? So, if it's not a school that's applying and it's not a school that's building, et cetera, et cetera, then I don't know what that application was, right? So, and if the board was led astray, the board was led astray and can correct itself, right? And I remember it was a very complex application, a very complex program. But it doesn't mean that the board was given all the facts.
Understood.
I would actually suggest that the property owner get its act together about ownership and all of the paperwork and clean itself up, right? Because it's not looking good based on what we're seeing.
I, we will, like I said, we will have the property on here at the next hearing. And prior to that hearing, we will respond in writing. But I feel confident that what those two bodies of evidence will show is that whatever has happened in the last four years from a transactional standpoint with the property does not change the fact that the project that will be developed and will be granted a certificate of occupancy will be a school and it will be operated as such.
Don't forget to listen to the hearing again and have your client listen to it, okay?
To what he said, absolutely.
Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you. So...
Is this going to take a while?
Yeah. I mean, you're looking for an extent. It's going to take a while for you to respond and put things together again. I would just say January or fourth. What do I have here? And was the submission on that January 15? Yeah, fine.
Okay. Please submit by January 15 for a continued hearing on February 4.
Thank you very much.
Ben, take this copy from the submission from the community person.
And of course, submit the community board recommendation, right?
Item number, appeals calendar, continued hearing items. Item number six, 201847A, 45 Case Avenue, Staten Island.
So, this one, we already spent, sent a dismissal warning in August and there was no response. So, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss. Full failure to prosecute.
Chair pro-mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application's dismissed, right? I didn't close it. Did I need to close it?
I think you should.
Should close it? That was considered closed. Now, we're voting to dismiss. Sorry.
That's okay. Vice Chair, Chair pro-mutter?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
So application is dismissed, right?
Right.
Okay. Item number seven, 2019-43A, 4132 Victory Boulevard Staten Island. Item number eight, 2019-44A, 4128 Victory Boulevard Staten Island. Item number nine, 2019-46A, 4124 Victory Boulevard Staten Island. Item number 10, 2019-47A, 4130 Victory Boulevard Staten Island. Oh, okay. Wait. No, there it is. Sorry. Just sign it, and I'll swear you in. No need to be sworn in.
Elise Foladere, on behalf of Roth, Rothberg Inspector, didn't appear that you had any comments.
No. So we can talk about all of these at the same time, even though each one is a separate, right?
Oh, we called them yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, we called them together. I just want to clarify, we're talking about four applications simultaneously. So are there any speakers on this application? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close all four of them.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, which is the DEP's letter of October 17.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number, new cases, item number 11, 2019-172A, 10 McGuire Court Staten Island. Yes, that can sign in. It don't have to be sworn in.
I know.
Elise Foladere, from Eric Palatnick PC, on behalf of the applicant. I have here today with me Mr. Montalto, who's the architect, and I have with me Mr. DeLuca, who's the owner of the home, so we can go through the history of the site. I realize it's very confusing, but it's because it's so old and has such an intense, all-over-the-place kind of history. Before they come up, I wanted to address the R32, R31. That paragraph was taken directly from the CPC report. I was just trying to not, to take the actual piece that when they made the change, I can correct it, I can fix it.
Now, you're supposed to put it in quotes when you do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
And you don't need to quote everything. You can have an ellipse.
Yeah.
And then pick it up again, and then we don't read about something that's not related to the site.
Understood. I just literally took it from the CPC report.
Right. Always put in quotes when you take, and cite to where you took.
Yep. Just don't like to make things up. And then, do you both want to come up with me? I guess first we can, I can let you know that I did, Tony told us about the, using, what is it called?
Okay.
Single Integrated Development. So we foiled DCP, but all they came up with was a school seat certification when I foiled them. That's the only thing they said they had, so unsure why that is. It seems that all agencies in this application seem to not come up with anything. They can tell you about the history of the site. They've gone to DOB multiple times trying to find records, and no one has come up with anything.
So, so this is so strange. So, there is a, I actually found one of the resolutions.
Yeah, that.
Right? On, on one of the actions.
And I have the foil.
You have the foil request where you asked for drawings from City Planning, is that?
I asked, I don't know if they had anything on this. I gave them the address and what I could find on ZAP, the number, and they said, this is what we got. The project was for school seat certification, we're not able to find any plans.
But there were four, three actions at City Planning, right?
Maybe I can foil them more broadly.
Right, so you just.
But I was trying to figure out what I could get at.
So you asked for the RCR, that's the school seats? There was also a ZRR and an RAR.
I could try those. I looked for them on ZAP, and I couldn't find anything.
Right, so they're old, so you're not going to find them on ZAP, really, right?
I'll try more.
You, you might find a CPC report. I found one CPC report, I forget which one, I have to look it up. I found one CPC report which made reference to the others, because there was a rezoning action, and then there was, I thought that was a topographic or something action. What's RAR, I forget. So one is, one is a mapping.
Okay.
One is a, I think, an amendment to the zoning resolution, and then the other one is, I guess is this RCR, school seats, right? And they said.
The project was for school seat certification, we're not able to find any.
Right. I, I could see why on school seats they wouldn't find plans, but they did do a rezoning and an amendment. So it seems to me there would have been drawings someplace. But the other question is, you're looking with respect to this building.
Yeah.
What about with respect to any of the others?
Yeah.
Like files at Department of Buildings for any of the other houses? It, it seems to me that the set of drawings would have shown seven or six, because it's really not clear, houses on site plan, and then to vest, I don't think you needed to be here at all, frankly, to vest, it's a single, right?
He can explain why we're here.
Okay, okay.
If I could take a few minutes just to go back to.
Yeah. Say, say your name from the record, Mr. Montalto.
And stand in the mic.
John Montalto, I'm the architect.
Lift it up a bit, thank you. Thank you, Elise.
I'm the architect who originally filed the application for the current owner back in, I think it was 98. At the time, I was principal at MMA Architects in Staten Island. When John brought the project to us, we did some research, and at the time, there was no files at all at the building department. The building was originally, was originally filed in 1982 under the old, you know, prior to the build, computer system, and it was filed by a architect by the name of Peter Otto, and a development, I believe was Bloomingdale or something, but there was no applications or no records of the, of the house. The developer went bankrupt, the bank acquired the property. Peter Otto had passed away, I believe, in the late 80s, early 90s, and so there was no records. Frank had obtained a, I'm sorry, John DeLuca obtained a set of drawings from Al Calvanico's office, who recreated the house as it was built, and we believe those plans were approved as well, but he provided those plans to, to my office. We created the plans again. We went in, we got the application reinstated by the deputy borough commissioner at the time in 98. When we brought the application to them, they required us to file a new application. Since they now had the computer system, they didn't want to use the old NB application from 82. At that time, I was instructed to file as an alteration application as opposed to a new building, because there was already an NB application on file, and therefore you can't have two NB applications at one time for the same building. So we filed as an alt-one. We got the application approved, permitted. John came in, did extensive renovation or repair work. He had to rip out or open up the foundation because he had, the house had sat for so long. The house was fully enclosed, heating systems were partially installed.
He brought the original photographs.
Okay, the ones that have the stamp on the back?
And more.
Yeah. I mean, it was, the house was sheet rocked and taped, but sheet rock was obviously now damaged, there was vandalism, there was deterioration for being sitting vacant for so many years, obviously the heating system wasn't running, so you had, you know, the wintertime, it was deteriorating. And we believe.
Sorry, let me just ask you, so that was like around 98, right?
Yes.
So up, so from 82 to 98, the structure sat vacant, is that?
Well, we don't know exactly when the house was built. The original application was filed in 82, that's when they filed for the drywall installations here at the board, for all houses. I was able to find site plans going back to the beginning, showing the development with all the houses, but they were spec houses. They were just plots to show in order to get the BZ case approved for drywall, school seat certifications, but they weren't the final plans. Every house had the same footprint, and all lots were different size, so it was just to get the initial applications approved. As time went on, applications or sites were revised with the actual homes that were built. Those documents are not available.
So that BZY case, the, it's really an A case is what it says on the CVO, 957-82A, was that was for drywells?
Yes, for the drywall installation.
BSA, okay.
Yes. We do have, believe, unfortunately, just receiving the comment yesterday, our expediter in Staten Island was able to obtain some of the documentations on the CPC and the B, and the board, so we will go back, go back to, to her and, and obtain them and see exactly what they were for. I know it took us a while to find stuff, my understanding is she did, was able to locate some of the resolutions. So we'll, we'll obtain those and see what they are for. So John had gone ahead and renovated, we believe the house was originally built as a spec home, so the bathrooms, the kitchens were not really well designed and.
He wants his photos back, honestly, because they're original.
Right, no, right, right. So this is 97, photos from 97. So this was the state of the house when you started the work?
Could you come to the mic, state your name, please?
John DeLuca, I'm the homeowner.
Okay. So this was, sorry, these were photographs were taken before the work started?
Before the work started.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. And so they're time stamped on the front, which is way better than the ones that we received, the others.
Some have time stamps on them, and some don't, they may have been from different rolls of film.
Last night he went way back.
Okay. So that was what was confusing about the submission. We thought this is work in progress, but in fact, it was work, the state of the house when you first moved in, and then had to rip out bad sheet rock and whatever else was bad, right? Okay. And this is what?
Tell her what it.
I, I, may I look at it?
Yeah, November 97?
That is, when we bought the house, there was about two feet of water in the basement, and we had a financial source to that water, and it was coming between concrete, where they poured it, stopped the pouring, continued pouring, and over the years, water had cascaded in. So the first thing we did when we purchased the house was excavate the side of the house, the foundation down to the footing, waterproofed it, and stopped the water from coming in, and got to pumping out the water. There's the excavation going on for that, that some of the walls that were vandalized. The fire department actually used to use this house, we understand, as a testing grounds or a practice grounds for fire departments. The kids vandalized it and set fires in it, and they would, they came in and put out the fires.
Well, at least they didn't burn it down, I guess.
And so we were happy to help. We're not happy to help no longer.
Wait, could you show it to the other commissioners, please? Just pass it down.
Did I have two bundles of pictures?
Yeah, there's, it's moving down. Don't worry, you'll get them back. Okay, that clarifies it, because I didn't understand what those photos were, plus the, the bills, which say things like, rip out the existing staircase, so then that was confusing too. So I understand now why you had to maybe rip out an existing staircase if there was vandalism and water damage and maybe.
Eight-year-old boys in this picture are now worried. They're terrified.
Right. You've been at this a long time. Okay. Okay. So I think, you know, so this is a, what's strange about this is the vesting case going back to 1982, right? Where there was a claim that the house was 90% complete in 1982. That's, that's sort of our trick, right? But the, the issue, because all of that work that you're showing us could have been done subsequent to 82, in which case then the house didn't vest, right? That, isn't that the issue?
Did that get vested from 2002?
Oh, sorry, 2000, oh, oh, right, I'm sorry. 2002 is the change in the zoning. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so as of, as of 2002, you had a house, and, and subsequently, you renovated the house, so you have a more expensive house, right? So arguably, right? In other words, there was, there were monies expended by somebody, and then they sold it, so arguably, that's a recoupment subject, but the, but anyway, it doesn't really matter because there was money invested from 1998 until 2002. When did you finish the work?
2005, 2006, we did the basement. We did that, we, we did, finished the basement well after we had recovered from the initial investment, and all the surprises, and this old, this new house.
No, but the work that you're describing, that you were, where you.
I tried to separate it more and.
The initial work?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it was something 300,000?
Before we moved in. And we moved in in August.
No, 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 but the critical time is 2002.
I'll show you.
August of 98, I think.
I'll show you which work.
Okay. So, but the miss, the main missing thing is the validity of the permit, which we need DOB to comment on. And we've reached out to DOB, right? So.
They're still looking at it. They couldn't find, he indicated they were having a little difficulty finding some records from Staten, the borough office.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they need a little more time. Can you tell me what time?
Right. So we need, for all of these cases, we need from DOB a statement that the permit was valid at the time of issuance. That's the real thing. And then I need from the architect, from Mr. Montalto?
Montalto, yes.
That the building, as currently constructed, complies with the R32 zoning.
Yes, and it does, I believe we provided that, but if not, we will make sure that it's clear that it does comply.
They, he provided a statement that it complies with the R32 zoning?
We had a, we did a zoning form that needs to be updated. He can tell us about the height that came up yesterday, and about the easement issue with the corner.
Yes.
Yeah, so as, under R32, with the lot being considered a corner lot, the property does comply with all the zoning regulations. That's how we filed the job in 98, and that's how it was approved. Then when we.
Under the R32.
Under R32, correct. And when we were trying to get the application completed and CVO issued, I believe it was around 2014, through the whole process of filing, like I was explaining before, originally they said file as an alt-one application. We filed the alt-one, we had an audit, which we were working on. A couple of years later, we came back to file a new amendment, and we had a new borough commissioner at the department, and they saw the application, he saw the application and said, we can't file this as an alteration because there's no NB. So he actually made us file a new application as an NB. Just to explain, I know there was a question yesterday about all the filings that we had. So in 2003, we were asked to file an NB application, which we did, and we proceeded with the new building application, which was also approved and permitted.
You have no copies of those permits at all?
John has copies. He can provide them, yes.
I have copies of permits and signed off.
From which date?
The, this, the electrical was signed off on 21 years ago, yesterday.
Any new building?
October 28, 1998.
Alteration applications or new builds?
Well, but in alt, if it were an alt-one, presumably it's going through an analysis that it complies with the zoning of prior to 2002, right? That, what's what we're looking for, a valid permit as prior to 2002.
The alteration application from 1998 was issued a permit, it looks like, in January 1998, and the application description is application filed to obtain certificate of occupancy for new house that was permitted under application NB 235 of 1982. House was constructed and abandoned. No records could be located to duplicate.
This is the permit from 1998.
Okay.
Which was one application that I had filed.
Okay. So in terms of this, so we don't need to go to, back to 1982, right? We just need to go back to a permit issued prior to 1990, I mean, 2002, which is this one, 1998, if the original issuance was then, and we need DOB to say it was validly issued, because it's a very nice-looking permit.
So hit those.
But we need to know it's validly issued. Those records, I know you're not even supposed to keep records for 30 years, but do you have records on this application?
Oh, that's also available on the biz system. If you enter the, you can.
Well, I just need it for our record.
Sure.
We need our records.
Right. Wait, so, but it's also, what I mean to say is for DOB to be able to go and, and understand the history of the application, in the event that DOB, for instance, doesn't have the drawings that were approved, perforated drawings from 1998?
We do have those as well.
Okay, so that would be great. If DOB can't dig up the perforated drawings, then you could aid this by giving them a copy of your perforated set, and then that way they'd be able to look at it and say, at the time of issuance, it was a valid permit.
I'm going to take a guess that they were confused with the request. They might have been looking for the original 82 permits and approved plans. I would be surprised that, because this, not only do we have hard copies of the permit and the perforated drawings here, these are also on microfilm. There was never been an issue of finding out what I created and produced and had approved. It was always trying to find proof from the original NB from 82.
Right. Right, I think maybe part of it is the story that we learned started off back in the day, right, in 82. So there we are in 82, not realizing that what's relevant isn't actually at all 82, it's 2002. So, right? Because we actually had a conversation about another case in the office that had to do with, they needed to have vested 30 years ago. And they did no subsequent work and pulled no subsequent permits, right? So, you know, we have been exposed to those cases where they're trying to vest decades and decades ago. Whereas in this case, your vesting is much, need is much more recent, right?
So going back to the corner lot, yeah. So the house was originally designed as, and approved as a corner lot, including in 98, my plans show that it was designed and in compliance with the corner lot requirements. I believe the corner lot issue came up in 2014, and I believe, and I can get the ordinance or the building code changed, that now questions whether or not Maguire Court can be considered a street. And based on the overall width, when I met with Anthony Otto from the Building Department, he's the one that was questioning and felt that we no longer should be considered as a corner lot because the width of Maguire Court does not satisfy the new regulations of a street, which means we're only fronting on Maguire Avenue. So being an interior lot now, when you look at the house, the side, the right side of the home is technically, or by zoning, is a rear yard, not a side yard. We need 30 feet. We don't comply. The only way the house would comply with the interior lot would be to take the house and rotate it 90 degrees and have it face Maguire Avenue, which is a very, very busy street. Certainly not something the community would like to see happen besides the owners.
So does vesting cure this? I mean, it's an interpretate, you're trying to vest an interpretation from 2000, from 1998, is basically what's going on. Because it doesn't change anything relative. If it was an R32 district, would it be different in terms of your yard requirements?
Well, speaking with Frank Marciano from the Borough Commissioner, Acting Borough Commissioner, he was okay with where we stand. He just did not want to, he wanted us to come to the board. He felt it was a simple application. He was kind of in favor of it, but he didn't feel it was really his jurisdiction to okay it the way it is. He says, go to board, you'll be back in five, six months, and you'll have your CVO. It's kind of his approach.
So, but, we're not, so, we're not waiving any yard requirements or anything, right? If under the R32, you complied?
Right.
And under a DOB, I mean, this is for you to make an argument with DOB, under a DOB interpretation that, I mean, what's fair is, if they interpreted it in 1998 as a street, then that's what you should be relying on. They can't flip their yard built.
Final is that if we vest them, then it can be legally noncompliant. Of course, at the time, then it goes back to 98, when it was considered a corner lot. I think that's probably what the DOB Commissioner was going to say.
That's exactly.
He just vests them, then that gives them the best legality and he'll be right.
He'll go backwards.
That's exactly what he was looking for.
Do you guys have a copy of the list of objections from 2016? And a lot of them say, come back to the committee.
And that's what he was looking for. So he can, you know, be able to state that as of 98, under the current zoning, as R32, as a corner lot, it complies.
So I have a question. So because the building wasn't really finished until 2005, you couldn't have applied for a CO, right? Because you vested under the statutory by 2002. You had, your building was essentially complete, right, by 2002?
We could have, there was, there was still a lot of sign-offs that were required.
No, but you had two years to apply for a CO. So by 2004, you weren't ready to apply for a CO, is that?
Sure. We were ready. What we did after 2000, and after we moved in, the basement is what we did. We finished the basement.
No, but I want to know by dates.
I could do that by date.
So the critical date is two years after 2002?
When we moved in, when we moved in in August of 2000, I'm sorry, 1998, when we moved in in August of 2000, 2009, we could have applied for a CO. That's why I was getting the electrical inspection to plug.
Sorry, let's hear the date again. You moved in when?
August 1998.
I thought, that's when you started construction?
No, construction started in October of 97.
Okay, so it took, so it's like a year's worth of construction and then you moved in? So that's another part that I don't really get. So you didn't apply for a CVO, right?
We didn't because we couldn't get that information from the Department of Buildings. There was, the file was gone, it was in order.
Yeah, we had a CVO, we were trying to pursue the CVO. When we went back in 2003, that's when they decided they want us to file an NB application. It just became very, every, every time we would come back, we'd have a new Borough Commissioner. Then a few years later, they said, no, you can't just eliminate the original Alt.1, you need to reactivate that, you need to close out both applications. When we reactivated the Alt.1, it brought up an old audit that had to be addressed, and it, we hired an expediter who unfortunately, you know, did not accomplish it. And it was, and I'm not criticizing anybody. This was a very, very unique case. I've been working in New York City since 85, and it's probably one of the most unique and long-drawn-out homes I've ever dealt with.
Lucky you.
And it's just every time we go back, it's, you know, two, three years later, and we have a new Commissioner, and they're like, what did you do here? It's like, I just did what I've been told to do by three different previous Commissioners.
Right.
And was there some delays on our side? I'm not going to deny that. There was. You know, obviously, when you go back to subcontractors four years later and ask them to get a plumbing sign-off, they don't want to spend any time.
They don't?
Sure.
He died.
He died, and he died.
So he really didn't want to do anything. So now you got to bring new contractors in, and then the audit came up, and then that's when the question about the corner lot came up. And we tried to get, we spoke to other architects on Staten Island who are much more familiar with dealing with the board. And I've had my own firm, but I did a lot of commercial work, moved to New Jersey. I was removed from New York City quite a bit. So we consulted with other firms, they, architects, they recommended speaking, trying to bring it to IRA. We submitted an application, a request for immediate IRA. Buckman, that was denied, so there was just, you know.
Okay, sorry, you can write a novel after.
Yes, I could.
So I just, the last question I had in terms of compliance with the R32 zoning is, what about the height? Because the height wasn't indicated on the, on your-
The height, well, we did submit the revised one, the-
He gave me a revised one. I don't think it got it to you.
Oh, okay.
The R32 height does comply. It was the R3X with the new contextual zoning and envelope requirements where the house exceeds it by a few feet.
Okay, but under R32, it complies? That's the main question?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because we already, are you satisfied with the serious loss question?
If they could just sketch it out to accompany the statement that it would have to be demoed, is it possible to just show us, like overlay the R3X bulk regulations on top of your plan? Your site plan at least?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
To show us why you have to completely demolish it and reposition it? I mean, I assume part of it is because you now are also no longer a corner lot, so-
Right.
Then that kicks in your rear yard regulations that cuts off the back part of the house as well.
Yes.
Don't go, you know, so detailed and crazy. Just give us a general sketch to support that statement, and we're good.
You can mark up prints of drawings. You don't have to do this on CAD.
Yeah, I can mark up the elevations for the heights, and I can mark up the site plan for the setback requirements.
Just do it, and make a photocopy, nothing fancy, okay?
It's kind of interesting because the Margaret Maguire Court, all the other buildings are built, and they're using the court as a front yard, and all of these homes have the required front yard facing the court.
Yes.
Which is kind of ironic.
Isn't that funny?
And that's a great point, because the house right behind them doesn't front on any street.
Right, right.
It only fronts on Maguire Court.
Exactly.
Our house, or John's house, fronts on both streets. And we're not compliant, but according to the Building Department, yet the interior lot does comply. And only front, and there's two houses that are on the court.
What is the whis, do you know, of curb-to-curb with?
I think it's like, no, I think it's less, how much is it? I think it's less. I'm not, I don't want to make a statement without.
36 easements, that sidewalk.
Paved or if it's a narrow pavement.
I'm just curious, not that you need to do this, but it's more like, one of, those kinds of questions for me are like, how could we have solved this another way? Like, if you had come for a GCL 36 waiver, then you're facing, you're fronting on a map, on a street that's recognized, right? And not only that, I think under the new, which has happened subsequent to the whole 2014 story, I think, GCL 36 Paragraph 3 was created, and it says that any house that is on a block where other houses have a CO automatically gets the right to front on that street. So you could build a new house today facing, if you tore down this house and you built that house, you could get an automatic, like, operation-of-law waiver on the GCL frontage rule? So then, how in the world would you not be fronting on a street? A street, a defined term, right? So I'm having so much trouble getting my head around what the problem is. You're a corner lot, it's ridiculous. Okay, never mind. Okay, so what we're waiting for then is, so you'll submit those clarification information?
The building's gets it, so.
Right, and those photos that are time stamped on the front?
Yeah.
If you could submit those into the record?
I can take a photograph.
Yeah, sure. It's just because the timestamp's on the front, that's really good. It's a clearer thing than those back-stamped ones.
This is a question, because I'm just not used to doing a single integrated development to use that.
No, I, well, I mean, if you can find more information, that'd be just helpful for your own record, but I don't think, I think now that I realize, thanks to Commissioner Brown, that we're just talking about 2002, it doesn't really matter what happened back then. It's mostly, you know, do you comply with the terms of whatever was granted back at city planning days? But if it was just school seats, they, it wasn't like a special permit or any kind of special planning layout. I don't know. So then that goes to DOB, then issuing, determining that it's a valid permit. So that's really their domain. So we do need that from them. But if you could maybe, well, they, the plans are on microfilm, so they can access them. We can let DOB know that we have a set of perforated drawings if necessary, right? And otherwise, we're talking about the 1998. What?
I was telling Tony, if you need it, I'll give that piece to you.
Right, no, that's what I mean. So you don't need to give them to us now. If DOB doesn't have access to them for some reason, then we'll ask you for the perforated drawings.
Would you object if our expediter went and sat with Anthony Otto and explained what specifically you're looking for?
No. Well?
Who?
Anthony Otto, he's the key plant examiner, or even Frank Marciano, the-
So the letters that we get about vested rights cases actually come from the General Counsel's office.
Come from General Counsel's office, in Manhattan.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it's not to say that the information that the General Counsel gets doesn't come from Mr. Otto, but the, ultimately, the letter comes from lawyers. So if we need help with this, we'll let you know. I don't, it sounds very straightforward now, actually. So, okay. Always tell a clear story.
There's a lot of information in this case, sometimes to figure out what is the case.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. You have to pull yourself back and say, what's the question? Right? Sometimes more information is just noise, right? Okay, are there any speakers on this? All right, then. We don't know how long we need for, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Please submit by January 24th, or December 24th for a continued hearing on January 14th.
And hopefully, we'll get a letter from DOB before then.
December 1st?
December 24th.
Send that information to me, so I can get, you can get it to the building. I thought you just need the perforated. I need the permits and stuff. I want to send it to the council. I will try for a much faster date.
Okay. Or you could scan the perforated drawings, maybe, and then forward them to us, if you can do that. That's a lot of drawings to scan.
I can get that this week. I just, yeah, let it clear.
Okay, great.
Just the scan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, item number 12, 2018-25bz109, Workman Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Good morning. So I just want to follow up with yesterday's comments. At yesterday's review session, I didn't mention receipt from the applicant late Friday of a submission that did not include drawings to show onsite parking. I hadn't realized that that submission had been accepted into the record, since at the last hearing, we indicated the record would remain open only to accept drawings, which we did not receive. As it turns out, though, some of yesterday's discussion at the review session contained references to the Friday submission, and I was not aware of this. So now I'd like to comment on Friday's submission, which has been accepted into the record, and all the Commissioners have received a copy of it. Last week, we closed the hearing and left the record open to accept drawings with a minimum of 14 spaces. These drawings were not provided. Instead, applicant submitted a letter that insists that the board has no authority to ask for the required number of spaces be shown on the plans that we approve, even though the special permit limits our ability to reduce the parking by any more than what amounts to 50% in this case. So from 600, one per 600 square feet, I'm sorry, one per 300 square feet to one per 600 square feet. As discussed yesterday, on top of this, several members of the board were not convinced that the demand studies, several is three, that the demand studies provided justified the reduction to 14 spaces, since the initial submission included the representation by the applicant's own consultant based on DOT standard analytical data, that demand actually exceeds zoning requirements by eight spaces. Listening to a full hour of testimony by the applicant's transportation consultant at the last hearing, who attempted to support leaky, erratic data, was not tantamount to the board's agreement, that the consultant's conclusion that demand was only five spaces instead of 36 was credible. If we were to reopen the hearing, as applicant suggests we do, the board could come to the conclusion, and based on the three board members who don't agree with the demand studies, that conclusion might require substantially more than 14 spaces are needed to meet demand, since, for example, just to make it easy, splitting the difference between the first study showing a 36-space demand and the next showing only five spaces is actually 21 spaces, so far in excess of the 14 that represents the reduction that's requested. And the applicant's suggestion that the three members of the board who formed the quorum at the last hearing, that was the October 22nd hearing, were somehow incapable of conducting an intense, or maybe that was, sorry, it was an August 14th hearing, that somehow were incapable of conducting, and in-
August 13th.
13th, okay. So, and the applicant's suggestion that the three members of the board who formed the quorum at the August 13th hearing were somehow incapable of conducting an intense and critical analysis of the presented data in the absence of the other two board members is simply insulting on many levels. And in particular, in light of the decades, quite literally decades, of combined experience and degree of specific expertise in reviewing such data that's represented by that quorum who was present on that date. And I remind also, and this is for the court's benefit, I remind that the absent Commissioners listened to the August hearing video and related submissions, and commented on their contents at the October 22nd executive session and hearing, as well as at yesterday's executive session. And as to the board's request for demand studies, we had this conversation at the hearing in August, during which the board demonstrated, with many, many cases, I think it was 48 cases in total, that it has consistently required parking studies to support the parking reduction request, has relied heavily on DOT trip and modal split analytical data, and only in rare circumstances has it permitted data that looked at the specific operations of the proposed facility. And this is for good reason, to only look to favor DOT data, since the facility can change hands or change operations, and the demand studies end up in the future having no resemblance to the new operations. And though today, in light of applicant's responses in this case, the board might have acted differently with respect to the three cases cited by applicant where no parking was shown on the plans, those cases are nonetheless distinct- was shown on the plans, those cases are nonetheless distinguishable from the instant 40 by 100-foot new construction site. No plans were provided for the fourth case that was cited, and I just want to go through those cases. So 163-13BZ, which was decided in April of 2014, was 133-1039th Avenue. That was a reduction for an existing 28-foot-wide office building to be enlarged, where it was quite impossible to add onsite parking, and where the board was persuaded that the demand was 10 spaces. 2016-4123BZ, which was decided in 2017, located at 168 Havermeyer Street, was an L-shaped existing office building with 20 feet and 24 feet of frontage, with an existing medical practice that was to be enlarged, and where, again, it was quite impossible to add onsite parking. In addition, the board was persuaded that demand for the use was only three parking spaces. Calendar number 258-15BZ was at 2619 East 16th Street, decided in 2017, was a 25-foot-wide lot, where it would have been impossible, given the narrow frontage, to include a parking garage, fire stairs with two means of egress, and elevator lobby to the office building above in the same building. In addition, the board was persuaded that the demand for the use was only four parking spaces, due to the operation of a related practice in tandem with the subject radiation and management practice. They were down the street from each other. 40-22 Main Street, which decided in 2011, calendar number 55-10BZ, for which no drawings were provided, and I don't think we were able to find drawings either, was, again, an existing building to be converted to ambulatory care. In that case, the applicant committed to providing the balance of the parking off-site, which is permitted by zoning under certain conditions. And of course, the applicant doesn't provide any examples of the cases where the board required that demand may be met onsite, and that drawings that show the required number of spaces be provided. And I want to say that, in response to the applicant's submission, our council continued its study of those 48 total cases that were, that were available on our database, so it's easier to research. Those date back to about 2012, and then there's a few others that date back even earlier than that, because they came for renewals or something like that. So of the 48 cases going back to at least 2012, there were two, only two other cases where the waiver by DOB was a possibility. Those two cases were 341 Nevin Street, which is 2016-4334BZ. And on that, that application, we have drawings. It shows parking spaces provided onsite. I don't leave anything out about that one, Chase. So parking spaces are provided onsite for 341 Nevin. So this was a site where it could have qualified for a waiver from DOB.
And the resolution didn't have a...
Speak up.
And the resolution for that application did not have a condition requiring the spaces to be provided onsite. It was implicitly provided on the plans as a requirement of the special permit.
Right. And then the other case was, for which drawings were found, because there were only two other cases where it would have been able to go to DOB for a waiver, was 439 Port Richmond Avenue in Staten Island, which is, this doesn't have the BZ now. Say again?
59-11-BZ, July 26, 2011.
Right. And that one provided five parking spaces onsite, and allowed for four off-site leased spaces to be located within the district, the distance permitted under the zoning. So it's not a true statement that the board does not require of those, of those sites where there is fewer, ultimately fewer spaces than what's, let's say, which might qualify for a parking waiver under kind of normal circumstances at DOB.
The board's not opining on whether or not such a parking waiver is appropriate?
No. However, the board is opining on whether a set of drawings that shows the required 14 spaces is necessary for us to be able to consider the application. So I also want to continue to say to the board, the applicant also does not acknowledge the board's right to correct itself when it believes it is operated in error or conditions have changed, as long as it explains the reasoning behind its position. That is stated by the, that right is stated by the courts in Cowan v. Curran and Charlesfield Delivery. And feel free to jump in if I left out anything on that. And as Commissioner Ottley-Brown stated, the board's request for drawings ensures that its authority and determinations are not being undermined, and that the DOB is clear about what the board has permitted, especially since DOB plan examiners rely on approved drawings rather than the BSA resolution that we see repeatedly. As stated at the last hearing and review session, this is not an interpretive appeal, so we don't have to analyze any further at this time the interaction between Section 44-23 and Section 73-44. And I would like to add finally, that as we have done in other cases, when we see floor plans indicating a given number of parking spaces, the board takes a critical eye and may find room to add more spaces where it believes demand or absence of on-street parking justifies the need. So there's another reason to see drawings. It's because often we say, look, you could fit another three, four spaces, add those three, four spaces. And here, the applicant has chosen to deprive us of the right to do that. So I would, with that, like to make a motion to deny the application.
Chair Promoter?
Or actually, I'm supposed to say grant, right. Grant the application. Yeah.
Chair Promoter?
No.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
No.
Commissioner Asheta?
No.
Commissioner Shabeta?
No.
We thank you very much, the exhaustive deliberation you've made in the application. We thank each and every one of you very, very much, in what for sure will be a landmark application. We thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13, 2018-177BZ, 2061 Ocean Parkway, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to any board member questions? Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. Do it myself.
Good morning, Mayor Altman, from the office of Mayor Altman. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments.
So this is a closed hearing, right?
Apologize, you're right.
So we need to reopen.
Correct.
Yeah. So we need to reopen. So a motion to reopen?
Good thing it's sworn in.
Motion to reopen?
Yeah.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Yep.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Let's try this again on an open record. I apologize. As I said, we did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday, heard your comments. We started to look at the survey after this, and I apologize that we didn't catch this previously. There are a lot of errors, it seems, with the adjacent property on this survey. If you actually add up the three dimensions along that property, they don't even add up to that 78-foot total that's on there. They're off by over three feet. So what we're doing is, we're having the surveyor go back out to the site and verify all of the information on the adjacent site on the left and the adjacent site on the right. We had checked all of the information on our site. We also are going to pull the final as-built survey on that site to the left, because we believe that it was built properly. And I can tell you, there's also a certificate of occupancy issued by Department of Buildings in 2017 on that site on the left. That was based on a BSA approval, as you said, from 2013, giving a 20-foot rear yard. But before I attest to your board that nothing has changed, although I don't believe anything has from the CFO, we want to have the surveyor go back out and re-measure to make sure what is actually existing on that site on the left.
Wait a minute. The site on the left is an illegal project, right? So it's not illegal?
No, there is a 2017 certificate of occupancy on that site.
That doesn't mean it's not an illegal construction.
We believe that it has not been touched since then. We think the surveyor is mistaken.
You can get, see, I'm sorry to report, but there are COs that are issued.
It was a 2017 stop work order.
Yes. Right, if you look at it, it's actually not having to do with the house itself, if you look at the stop work order. We did look at that last night as well.
There is a stop work order.
Right, but it doesn't have to do with the house.
But by the way, it doesn't mean that the house, I'm sorry to report, that we work on COs that have been issued that shouldn't have been issued.
Well, that's why we're not relying on that. We are having the surveyor go back out and re-measure.
But I wouldn't waste your time with that, because what the issue was, is the other side, the house to the right, the representation was that the house to the right had a 20-foot rear yard.
Actually, I re-watched the hearing from September 10th, and I, because I didn't recall saying that, and I will tell you that when I re-watched it last night, twice, what I saw was, what we said was, we attested to the 20-foot rear yard on the house on the left. The house on the right, we never said it was a 20-foot rear yard. We said it was a two-story building. It was never said, and we actually handed up a survey at that hearing, which is the same survey that we submitted to you with this submission.
Okay.
Showing the larger rear yard. I don't want it to be said on the record that we did that, which we did not.
Okay. So cutting to the chase, the other house to the right has a 20...
26-foot rear yard, according to Urban Cardographics. And again, we are going to have it verified by the survey.
Okay. So the second floor of this house needs to be set back 25 feet. Simple, I don't want to discuss it anymore.
Even though there's a house with 20 feet on the left.
Set it back 25 feet. It's about being respectful of neighbors, and it can be done at 25 feet. So let's just cut to the chase.
I will share that with the architect.
Save yourself a lot of money with resurveying somebody else's property and all that stuff, and just do it.
I will share that with the architect and the client.
Okay, good. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Good. So we need to put this on for continued, because we don't have a set of drawings. You can do January.
Submission date of December 24th, with a continued hearing on January 14th.
Is there any way to do that sooner?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 2019-41BZ, 1 West Street, Manhattan. Did you bring hard copies?
Yes.
Okay. Just make sure that two of the shares get. Then we'll swear you in. I'll swear you in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond to any board member questions? Just in case it has to be reopened. Sure.
Ellen Lehman. At Reed Frank Harris Schreiber in Jacobus.
Want to tell us what you gave us?
I believe it had, the hearing has to be reopened.
Oh. Is that true? Really? I don't know, do you want to discuss the plans?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't realize. Okay. Thanks. Yeah, so a motion to reopen.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
So submission was made this morning, and will be brought to the office in hard copy with two changes to the drawing. The first is that the insulation materials are labeled in details number two and three on PCE 105. And the second is that the label for the plan legend is moved to incorporate the floor and ceiling information.
It was moved where? On 104?
On 103 and 104, per Commissioner Asheta's recommendation, it was moved from just above the ceiling and floor finish to incorporate that information.
Okay.
I know there was a question about the construction of the ceiling above the weightlifting and cardio areas.
Yes.
The building order engaged the acoustical consultant, Longman Lindsay, to do a full analysis of the space. The consultants took sound readings of the Lifetime Facility on 42nd Street, which has the same type of programming as the PCE proposed at 1 West Street.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I can't listen at the same time.
They also did a study of the structure of the building on 1 West Street, and based on that information and the decibel levels of the recorded sound transmissions, the owner and Longman Lindsay together developed a set of specifications to avoid transmission of noise. The isolated ceiling construction shown in detail one is designed to avoid the transmission of music to the floor above. Longman Lindsay determined that the isolated ceiling is not necessary in the weightlifting and cardio areas where there is no music to be played.
Oh, you're talking about music. We're talking about vibration, like noise from drops and things, right?
So the primary concern is that, is the structure borne and impact noise. And what mitigates that type of noise is floor construction that absorbs the impact. Accordingly, the construction details show a floating floor with a Piltek resilient acoustical mat and two-by-four wood sleepers to absorb the vibration.
So what he's saying is, the group fitness that has the ceiling is because there is music.
Right, exactly.
And there's even a platform for the instructor to be standing on. Right. And then also in the spin room, also because of the music.
Right. That is, one of the two group fitness rooms is the spin room and the other, the other multipurpose room, and both of those have the ceiling.
Okay.
All of the other areas have the floor construction shown on details two and three. And there are also insulation boards surrounding all of the columns to prevent transmission of vibration.
Okay. I think that's it, then. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments on the board? No? Commissioner Asheta, you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, thank you very much. So I'd like then...
Anyone from the committee?
You have to close it.
Yeah, I have to close it.
The speaker.
Speakers. Are there any speakers on this? This is a gym? No? 1 West Street? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 15, 2019-59BZ, 1417 Webster Avenue, the Bronx.
Right, don't need to be sworn in.
No, she needs to sign, though. She needs to sign. Yeah, do the one for 71, yeah. Okay.
Elise Foladere for Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
Okay. So actually, we did receive the community board's recommendation to approve, so they got in in the nick of time. I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 16, 2019-71BZ, 2868 Fulton Street, Brooklyn.
Elise Foladere from, on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector. I don't think the community board ever met.
No.
No, they're going to meet in November.
We're not, we're not. They've had the application here since whenever, April. That's enough. Right. So I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
This is adjourned 17, right?
Yeah, but I submitted something based on...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you want to swear you in? Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Item number 17, 2017, 243 BZ, 2916 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens. And did the Commissioner see Henry Euler's letter? Yes. Okay.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnick, the PC. On behalf of the applicant, I thought it was a pretty positive letter, actually. I can give you the submission if you want. The reason I didn't submit it is because I got the landscaping and a lot of the other photos last week, and it was past your adjourned date already, so I didn't, you know, just...
Okay, so maybe explain to us what's happening.
Okay, I'll hand them out.
What? You saw it?
I saw the...
Yeah, I saw the photos.
So, the pest control sign and the other random banners, they took pictures of the walls, painted it. They look pretty painted to me with no crazy signs, and in the rear, there's no wires and things anymore. So, the first few photos are photos of... Well, first is showing no banners on that sidewall or signs, and then the rear is shown after that of the building where those wires were, and then there's a trash enclosure shown.
What are those... You know what those two tanks are or containers are? The drum?
I'm not sure, I can ask, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay.
And then the sales items aren't outside anymore, that's after the trash enclosure photographs, and then the last few photographs are the landscaping photographs.
So, then, what are you waiting for? Like, why did you want to adjourn this?
I didn't want to adjourn it, I just didn't have...
Oh, it was late. Oh, it was a late submission. I'm sorry.
I never want to adjourn.
Oh, I see, okay. You say you've adjourned. So, then we don't need to adjourn, right? Now, of course, I don't have my notes here. Let's see. Let's see what we said. We said we wanted the tires and the dumpsters removed, so I guess the dumpsters are now enclosed. Sale products being displayed outside, they're not anymore, it looks like. Wires and banners removed. What about the pride pest control sign?
In Henry Euler's letter, it says it's gone, and then I had the photos of no extra signage, but he pointed out specifically that the pest control... That's at least what I read.
And the comment was the triangular area around the stairs landscape, is that that little triangle? That's that one here? No. No. That other little...
This is the one on the court, uh, behind...
Got it, got it, got it, okay. And then last was we needed a revised statement of facts to reconcile the expiration date.
Oh, sorry.
Can't you just correct it verbally?
Yeah, let's see, what is the issue that needs to be reconciled?
Yeah, it's just that the date should be corrected. On page one, you said the grant expires December 26, 2015, but on page two, you say it expires 12/16, 2015. The correct date is?
26.
12/26. Well, 12, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, but it is 12...
It's December 26, 2015.
Okay, December 26, 2015.
So, for our council to note, so that they... And anyway, they know because they look at the resolution, which tells you, okay? All right, then.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so, um, yeah, we're happy to finish this. Um, good. So, then, are there any speakers on this? No? Okay, so then I'd like... I don't think there's anything. Were there any? I guess, okay, like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the standard kinds of conditions, graffiti free, landscape maintained, the asphalt surface or wherever the surface of the lot maintained, repaired as necessary, uh, signage must always comply with C12, C1 regulations, and I think that's it. Anybody other things? No parking on the sidewalk in case that was something that was an issue. And I think that's it, right? No, um...
Sale of products.
No sale of products, yeah, no sale of products kept outside, that was a big issue, and, um, and I think there was also this thing about the U-Haul, no, no...
U-Haul's been stopped.
It's been stopped, so the U... So, maybe that's more of an observation than a resolution that the U-Haul has been discontinued.
And because of the drums, would we put a condition that no storage of hazardous...
Yeah, no storage of hazardous materials.
On-site.
On-site. I don't know what the drums are.
And no tires outside of an enclosure, I believe.
Yeah, no tires to be stored in the exterior, right? Okay, good. Everybody got that? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number 18, 2017, 309 BZ, 406 Rensen Avenue, Brooklyn. So, I don't really understand what's going on, but anyway. Okay. We have an appearance by someone. Right, so we need to raise your right hands if anyone's going to testify? Yeah? No, they're not opposition, they're the tenants. Lawyer for the tenant. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, please sign. And you'll sign too. Yeah, can you print your name? I can't see that, I understand that, that is. You're Mr. Golding, right? Okay, you're the person I spoke to. Okay. Yes, ma'am, sir, sorry. Force of habit. Hi, state your name, please.
Kevin Golding from the Law Office of Golding Associates, 2994 New York, New York. Good morning. Me in behalf of the landlord, who is at a parent's moment.
Sorry, who do you represent?
Yes.
You represent the landlord?
Yes, for this particular appearance, and also for, uh, one of the tenants, which is top quality.
You represent both the landlord and the tenant?
And just for this appearance, I represent the landlord, who is not here today.
Sorry, I don't understand. How do you represent the landlord just for this appearance?
Are you retained by the landlord?
I am instructed to appear just for this one appearance, because he's not here.
Now, so...
Because he's out of the country.
I understand, but I don't understand how you can be representing the tenant and the landlord at the same time, and you haven't been retained by the landlord.
Well, the reason being because there is no conflict between the parties.
Outside of the conflict of, uh, conflict, appearing without having a representation agreement, it's either you're his attorney or he's not. It can't just be for one appearance.
Right, and so, and you're not aware of the situation with the landlord, and I do have to say, you do not have the same interests because you just don't. So, you're not aware of the situation, but the situation is this, that the landlord is, uh, is remiss in, um, in following through on the requirements of this board, and has not submitted anything to show that it is meeting the requirements that were imposed upon it by this board, and that puts it in violation of a 2016 stipulation with the Office of Administrative Trial hearings, which required that the landlord, um, actively prosecute an application before this board, and we determined that it has not been doing that, because, look, he's not here, you're not even properly retained by him, so he doesn't even bother to send his own attorney to respond to this. He was represented by counsel at one point and dismissed that counsel, that was able counsel who could have dealt with this, and, um, and so we don't have any choice at this point because he is not taking the appearances before this agency seriously or the stipulation that was issued actually almost three years ago seriously, and so we have no, we have no choice.
I appeared last time.
For the tenant last time.
For the tenant.
And we were instructed, I was instructed, to go through the videos on YouTube and see what the violations were. Uh, I have done that, and I...
But you submitted nothing to us. Why?
That is also true.
Sorry, say, what did you say? Sorry, say that again.
I said that is also true, I realized that there had to be anything that was submitted. I communicated with Mr. Kitz from the...
No, 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 no. At the last hearing, see, this is part of the problem, and, yeah. At the last hearing, we gave instructions about what needed to be done, and when there was a submission date, counsel advised you that the work had the materials, just like in a court, that the materials had to be submitted by a certain date for us to review, and nothing was submitted, and it's not, it's the landlord's responsibility to handle this, not the tenant's responsibility, and the landlord has chosen to do nothing, and so we don't have any choice but to say, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how you're responding because if the, if you're not taking care of all of the issues, and you're not the tenant for the entire place, you're the tenant for only one of the spaces, right?
Well, yeah, that's correct, but my client has taken care of the majority of the issues.
Just for one second, when you say your client, you're, which would...
I'm referring to, um, top quality, which is, I think, is for...
And the landlord is not your client, is that accurate?
Well, I mean...
It's a yes or no?
I mean...
Also, for our purposes, we need an owner's authorization form for anyone appearing as a representative, so it sounds like right now you are representing, um, your client, the tenant.
Right, if you're saying that every client is to submit authorization, then I don't have that to do with it.
No, you don't represent the owner, that's just as simple as that, right?
Yeah.
The owner can't, yeah, you can't sort of assume representation if the owner doesn't give you... He's probably saying, "Yeah, yeah, go ahead with your client, go take care of it."
So, I mean, so if I may, since the last time you were here, like I said, we have gone through the list of, uh, recommended issues or violations that need to be cured. Certainly, we have taken care of the majority of them, and I have photographs this morning, I know administration missed it early, but I have photographs this morning indicating that we corrected the sign issue, issue with the sidewalk, moved many of the cars. We've also painted the back area and cleaned the, uh, debris that was in the back of that area. My client has also sought to put in a sprinkler system. I did communicate with the fire department about that by email, and my client hired an architect. The architect's response via letter was that there was existing violations on the building and that we're not, we could not go forward with the sprinkler, install a sprinkler system until we had cured that first. So, we went to the building departments, and they told us how to, what the violation was and how to cure it, and we communicated with the architect who submitted the initial draft which caused the violation, and we're waiting for that particular firm to withdraw that submission.
Which particular firm? Sorry, who?
The firm that submitted.
Cause the violation? I'm sorry.
No, that submitted. It was a job that was submitted, and for some reason, that job was rejected, and that caused the violation to lay across, you know, across on the building.
That, no, no, submission of drawings doesn't cause a violation. Operation without proper sprinklers, et cetera, causes a violation.
I know that, but there were other violations on the building, which means that we can't install the sprinkler system until those violations are cured.
I just want to, I just want to make sure, when you're saying your client, you're only talking about tire one, and the drawings were filed by the tenant, tire one?
Top quality.
Oh, sorry.
Top quality.
Sorry, top quality. So, this was all just top qualities, application to the buildings department, all of them? Or is it for the entirety of the building? That's what I'm a little confused about.
Okay, the sprinkler system is in reference to top quality.
Correct. So, this is our problem. There are three tenants in the building and a landlord who is a scofflaw and refuses to do what needs to be done, and is imposing on one tenant who is taking the time and trouble and expense to bring in an attorney to cover the behavior of the landlord for the all, for the entire site and the other, and the other tenants. That's what we're being asked to consider, right? At the last hearing, I'm just looking at my notes, and I didn't listen to the video, at the last hearing, we said we'd give you a deadline to complete or we vote to deny the continuation of the use, and that's why the last hearing was in June. So...
What I'm asking for, uh, today, um, the landlord is currently out of the country. Come back.
Do not represent the landlord, since you do not, it just...
That I'm representing him, I'm saying that he's out of the country right now.
He's always out of the country.
He's not back to the neighborhood.
He doesn't ever come here.
So, um, my request is that on his return, that is hope that we can communicate with him and cure the other violations that my client is not in control of.
Why, why should we believe after all of these years? Don't forget, he was under order three years ago to cure the site and instead did nothing until he appeared before the BSA and we made him, we forced him, because we had fire department inspections, to remove boats, trash, all of these things from the site. He does, he is not acting in good faith. He hasn't, he's under order, and the result of the order is a padlock decision. I don't know if you're even aware of the stipulation from 2016. December 2016 was a determination against him for using the site improperly, and he's, he's delayed it for three years. What are we supposed to do?
I can only urge for a...
For your own client.
...intention.
No.
I think that we would...
Sorry. I'm sympathetic to your client, I really am, but what's got, what, the problem is, you're up against a very bad actor who has, who holds New York City government in enormous disdain and refuses to do what needs to be done as a responsible landlord. What I would suggest is your action is against the landlord, not the BSA. You have a lease, the lease entitles you to do certain things, the landlord is in default of New York City government laws, and that's one of the terms of the lease. The landlord has to be compliant, right? And he's not.
Right, I understand that, but, um, there's some substance to that, is that if you look at the issues that need to be addressed, that we certainly addressed the majority of the issues.
How can you address issues that are not related to your own space?
That's why we need the extra time to...
That's why we're saying no.
What makes you think that you're going to be able to address those other issues when you're, like you said, it's not within your control?
Well, um, um, since I've been on the case, we managed to make a favorable progress, and I have photographs to prove that...
Well, show us the photographs, but your response to not being able to install sprinklers without clearing up other violations makes no sense.
Um, for that, I do need the landlord's cooperation, and I also...
There you go.
I also do have...
Yeah, it doesn't matter, just go.
Madam Chair, I believe there are neighbors also, I don't know if you want to take a test?
Okay, yeah, I do. Are there speakers on this case?
Yes, okay, we'd like to hear from the speakers, but just a, just a session.
Um, I also have the order which caused the violation, and that is given to the fire department. The building was also...
So, you said you need, obviously, we know, because the landlord came up here and said he's not installing sprinklers, and he's not taking financial responsibility for it, and he can't afford it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so, um...
There is a relationship that my client has with the landlord, and as a result of that, well, the short of it, my client is going to install the sprinklers. So, I mean, it's just...
Only in his space?
On all units?
Or all?
Sprinklers have to be every, maybe fire department could get up and tell us what the scope of the sprinklers?
John Daly, Fire Department, yes, we are questioned that the entire site would be sprinkled, along that the ceiling is also be fire-rated, meaning for the gypsum board on the underside of the, were joists, protect those. That's what, those are two of our requirement, the entire site.
And, and the entire ceiling has to be fire-rated?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mm. Ceiling fire-rated. So, did you, you understood what Chief Daly said? The enti, all, the entire building, not just your client's space, has to be sprinkled? So, who's doing that work, right? Wouldn't that be normal to expect either the other tenants or the landlord to pay for that, and not your client to pay for that?
Correct.
Yes, so that's proof to us that this is never happening.
I would have to speak to the tenants to see what-
Your client's not absorbing that cost.
You're, say it again?
Your client's not absorbing that cost.
For the entire site? No, he is not. But I would have to speak to the tenants to see what their position is on.
So, here we keep going on and on and on.
We have a dangerous situation.
No, I think we're done.
The other tenants, if they do care at all, they should have been here.
So, I would have to say, you go like this. We, we decide on this case now. We contact Oath that the case is in violation of the stipulation, which ordered them to diligently prosecute before us, which it's, this has been going on for three years. That's not diligent prosecution. I'm not commenting on you. You're not also an expert in this type of law, so a lot of this is you figuring this out as you go along, right? But, and then, because Oath is going to act, now you have recourse, both against the landlord, and maybe a conversation with Oath, to see if there's something that can be done in terms of your client's business. That's all I can say, because it, there's nothing more that we can do. It's obvious to us, after all this time, that the landlord has no intention of complying with fire department orders, no interest in the safety of the community. There's a reason why it needs to be sprinkled and fire-rated, and it's, it's not you, and I, I feel sorry for the businesses that are affected here. I think there's recourse for those businesses, but we're not the recourse. So, I'd like to hear from the community, please.
Can I sit down?
Yes, please. Just have a seat, and they'll come speak.
Oh, sorry.
That's a current. It's a current. And just to point out, these photos, it's horrendous. The photos show all this trash stored in the exterior of the building, et cetera.
No, you don't have to be sworn in here.
You don't have to be sworn in. You just speak. Come on. You'll be given three minutes. Just state your name, please.
Hi, I'm, uh, good afternoon.
Say, speak up, please.
New Orleans. We, um, tenants, we own 39 East 57th Street, which is on the other street, in the back of this property, Remson Avenue. Our problem is that last time we were here, the landlord was, I had requested that the landlord be compliant with the original variance, and put the, and remove his gate, he has a roll-up gate about 12 feet, about at least 12 feet, and replace the glass windows, and stop the noise from the auto mechanic operation. So far, he's not done that. The building's in the same condition as it was, the physical building, but he did move some of the garbage, some of the garbage, the garbage and the construction debris, and so on, in the back. And, and he put it in someplace else, on another site that he has. But we would like him to comply with the variance, and close those noise, and abate the noise from the, from the side.
Sorry, could you explain again? What's the source of the noise?
He has removed, originally, were glass windows, the blocks that was-
Oh, right.
-concreted in. He's removed those blocks, and now, he put, he put another block back. It's just packed in, it's not really concreted in, and it's not an original block. And he also put a large gate, roll-up gate, which sometimes if you open it up, and you get noise. But for the last six months, they have not been opening that gate anymore. But I'd like to close that gate, remove, and the building put back to the original condition.
So, I remember, a long time ago, because we've been at it this a while, we asked that he close that access to the rear. You're saying they continue to access the rear?
It's still, it's still open. Yes, thank you. And I would like that taken care of.
Yeah, so-
And I just heard that he has painted the back, and he's, it's, in progress, it's just started, uh, two days ago. It's not completed, the painting of the back wall. And he also, the, the, the back area has removed dirt from the level ground, and it's now, so he could have a, go straight from his garage, from the shop, straight into the yard. So, I'd like that-
Into the backyard?
Into the backyard.
Oh.
So, we like that dirt refilled.
Mm-hmm.
And we would appreciate that, if it's possible.
Okay. Thank you. State your name for the record.
Good afternoon. The name is Pinky Headley, and-
Sorry, go closer to the mic, please. Go closer to the microphone, please.
Okay.
State your name again, please.
Pinky Headley, and the address is 8 East 58th Street, zip 11203.
Thanks. Okay, what would you like to say?
Uh, we have continuing problems. The last time we were here, uh, nothing really has been corrected, except on the sidewalk, I noticed they've put up signs saying, "No parking on the sidewalk." We're still having a problem with alternate side parking, also with... They still are putting cars out in the street that they have worked on, and still doing that. My property is adjacent to 406 Remson, and somehow, my backyard is clean now. In, on 406, there are overgrown bushes, which is, you know, would attract rodents or whatever. And I have spoken with the landlord, and somehow, he's saying, he's, you know, there's nothing he can, you know, do. There's also a tree, big tree, hanging, the root is over on 406. And somehow, I asked him, can he cut the tree from the root, and it's still hanging over? And now it's fallen, and the leaves are just too much.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what else to do with him, because, as a matter of fact, I saw him just last week, on the sidewalk, he was bringing a lot of-
Junk.
Junk in?
Yeah.
And somehow, I don't know what else, you know, to do.
That's the landlord who's doing that, or one of the-
The landlord. It's the landlord.
Yeah.
And he's encouraging, you know, people that he is renting to. So, I don't know what the end result will be. I would like for something to be done.
Okay.
And as my, he says, "Oh, I'm selling the property."
Right.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming. It's important that we hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers on this? Any other neighbors? Okay. No? Please speak. We love to hear more information. The more the useful, more better, useful. No? Okay. Okay. Uh, let's see. Mr. Goldern, do you want to come back? Even as the representative, I'm just gonna add, representative of one of the tenants, okay? So, you heard the testimony. This has been going on for, I don't even know how long, but it's been in the government for three years, that I know of, right? Since that stipulation, and it came to us in 2017. And the complaints we're hearing today sound very similar to the complaints we were hearing two years ago. So, we don't, and it's very clear that the landlord isn't, is just making things worse, and has no interest in, in correcting the problems on the property. So, I, just to, so that your client understands that the, the reason for this problem is the landlord, the landlord's refusal to cooperate. So, I would then like to make a motion to close this hearing. Chair Promoter? Aye. Oh, sorry. Wait a minute, wrong page. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And, um, a motion, a conditional, well, sort of like, a, sort of instructions on what we should do now. Okay. So, the first is, that we contact Oath, and let them know that the stipulation order is violated. And then, they do what they do, which says, according to stipulation, that they will issue a padlock order. But the other thing is, I'm wondering, in terms of site cleanup, we've seen on other locations in the city, where there's a really bad site, HPD actually steps in and does cleanup.
It's commercial property.
So, but, but maybe in the, in the light of Oath, there's something where, because I, I'm hoping that padlock means fencing.
Maybe sanitation can go in.
Maybe sanitation. So, in other words, and fire department, yeah? You want to, so maybe fire department can help us with this? Okay. So, fire department, and working with these other agencies, that ideally, fencing would go up around the site, the site be cleaned, and, and so, at least, it's not sitting there as a nuisance to the neighbors. And then, you know, the businesses do what they have to do with both Oath, Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings. The stipulation is available, uh, we, you can ask us, and we can give you a copy of the stipulation, if you want to reach out to them directly, if the tenants want to reach out for, for help. Right? Okay. So, on that, this was an, this was an application for an extension, right?
Yeah.
Right? So, on a motion to grant the reinstatement, that's what it was, a reinstatement of the variance, on a motion to grant the reinstatement. Chair Promoter? No. Vice Chair Chanda?
No.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
No.
Commissioner Shabeta?
No.
The application's been denied. Denied. So, there's no more variance on this site? Some future owner might be able to come back, but not this one? Okay. Okay, thank you. If you, if you have questions, please contact either our counsel or deputy director. You can get their information.
The deputy, okay.
That's Tony Matias. And then, we'll be in touch with fire department, Department of Transportation, and I don't know if HPD is any-
And the project managers.
And the project managers, right?
Yeah. Oops, my thing is, I spilled it, sorry. My card is low.
They don't have a cleanup crew.
Do we work with somebody that's an emergency?
No? Okay. Thank you. We'll ask. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Item number 19201856BZ, 83 Coldbridge Street, Brooklyn?
We should be taking a break, but we'll do it right after this one.
Okay. Great.
The 115th, it's also adjourned, so maybe you want to-
Okay, do adjourn.
But 68th is withdrawn, so you want to get rid of this?
Right. That's true.
Let me swear you, swear you in? Is this an adjournment?
No, this isn't an adjournment. It's still sworn.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry.
Hello, Frank Noriega, from Shell Nobel PC, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
We did hear the comments yesterday. I just want to, before we get into this, we, we understand the gravity. We have informed the client that they should be expecting this notice of dismissal hearing, and they need to get things in gear. That being said, we are asking for as much time as the board is willing to give us, in order to address what we can, before this, the board decides to dismiss this.
I don't understand why you need a lot of time. You've not, you started this a year ago. There have been three adjournments. What kind of time do you need?
Uh, there, there's been some issues, both with the applicant and the design team. There's actually been some changeover with the design team, that have dragged this out a little bit longer than we had anticipated. As such, we're, we're just hoping to get a couple months, three months, potentially address this, before actually getting this dismissed.
February is, that's all. February, that's it. You know, if you're not ready with an application, then don't file it, and then you can come back another time.
All right. Submission date, January 22nd, with a continued hearing on February 11th.
February 11th.
And a dismissal warning letter.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 20201867BZ, 7406 Fifth Avenue, Brooklyn?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hello again, Frank Noriega, from Shell Nobel PC, on behalf of the applicant. We are also asking for an adjournment on this one. This one, again, this is only the second hearing, I believe?
Right.
On this one, or would have be the second hearing? A little different than the previous application. It's not a design issue. There's an issue with how the spacing is being used, and there's a tenant issue that we have to address. Again, we would like a few months to address this, and come back and be able to, say, at least as far as use is concerned, we have addressed the issue.
You're filing, are you filing, may I ask a question, Madam Chair?
What? Yes, go ahead. Of course.
Are you filing for a PCE for the tenant in the, the ground floor?
Um, my, I've, just off a reckless, I don't believe you, we can file for a PC in this area?
No, it's a-
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a variant, I'm sorry.
This is a C1, this is a, no, this is a 621. This is an enlargement.
No, no, there's a tenant on the bottom.
You know, I, I believe what she's getting at is, potentially, this, this should be a PCE.
Yeah.
But my understanding is, we cannot get that, so that's part of the issue we have to work out with the tenant. They cannot be a PCE.
C13, yeah. It's a variance, yeah, yeah.
It ends in C18.
Oh. Sorry about that, Frank.
I'm wrong.
Okay. So, the issue is, you have an illegal tenancy, and you're trying to cure that before you continue with this application?
Well, so, it's part of how we address it. I know there were some issues. The fire department came in and said, noticed that there were some issues. I believe it's, was leased out as Asian, or Eastern medicine, and then there's being massage, well-
It's giving massages, body rub and stuff.
And they did have somebody on site-
She knows a little bit about it.
-with a massage license. And we have to make sure that that is not happening on site.
Right. Okay. Uh, well, again, this can't just be here forever, right? So, this was submitted in May of 2018 to this board, and hung around for a very long time, right? So, we only heard this in July, but it's been in this agency for well over a year. And, so, you need to make some serious progress. So, I'd say February and late February. Okay? And this is one of those, it's a legalization. I don't really understand what one thing has to do with the other. You know, illegal occupancy, legalization of the, the floor area, right? But it's illegal occupancy means you can't get your Department of Buildings approval. But the floor area question's a different thing, right? We're just being asked, can you waive floor area, right?
That's all before, that's all that's at the fore.
That's before us. We're not here about occupancy. If you can never pull a permit, that's another thing.
February 5th submission, with a continued hearing on February 25th.
Was it 25th?
25th.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Item number 212018141BZ, 1103768th Drive.
This is a withdrawal request?
It's withdrawal now.
No, you could just-
Police full of day from our Polatnic PC.
Okay. So, for a motion to withdraw?
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. Do you have it? I'm missing, I'm missing a sheet, sorry. Have to improvise.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ishabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Isheta?
Commissioner Isheta, sorry.
Keeping this on our toes. Aye.
Okay. Application's withdrawn, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break.
10-minute break. Thank you.
We're behind our. Oh, you want to do a lunch break instead? Hold on a second.
Back on the record. Mic's on. Item number 222018154BZ, 966 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Sure.
Good afternoon. Lyra Alpin from the office of Lyra Alpin. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday, heard your comments. With respect to the zoning analysis form, I double-checked the form that was submitted most recently, and it does show a height of 34 feet. I know that yesterday there was a comment that it was at 35 feet. Yeah, maybe you were looking at an old zoning chart? Double-checked. You don't have to have it with you, do you?
Of course I do.
34?
Of course she does.
So, if she just shows it to us and it says 34, I can't see it. Yeah, yeah. 34, shows 34, and that was submitted 10-9.
Okay.
So, maybe you're looking at an old one. So, not that sheet, the BSA sheet, right? You're seeing it on the plan?
No, no, no. There was a mismatch. Okay. Where I picked it up, then I don't know.
Okay. Also, on the attic, there was a discussion of that wall. It actually is correct. First of all, it's not a window, it's an access panel, similar to the one that you see in the front accessing the mechanical space.
Oh, oh.
They said they might put a hanging. Exactly. And in addition, that double wall is correct. You don't see it on the other bedroom, because that, if you look at the two dormers, one dormer is shifted just slightly off from the other. So, it's the back wall happens to coincide with the dormer on the, I'll say, the top bedroom on the plan. On the bottom bedroom, it doesn't. It's shifted over, which is why you have the two walls.
Okay.
So, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, then, I'd like to make a motion to close. Oh, are there any speakers on this? Sorry, forgot. Okay, motion's closed.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Isheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the usual condition removal of existing exterior walls in excess of those shown on the plan will void the special permit.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Isheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 232018193BZ, 1389 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. Oops. Sorry. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Hello again, Lyra Alpin, the office of Lyra Alpin. Once again, we had somebody attend your executive session, heard your comments. With respect to the open space ratio, what I did was, I actually ran the numbers myself this time. I see what his error was. It should have been 130% on the existing, it should have been 61% on the proposed. I am waiting for those documents to come through right now. 61% open space? Open space ratio, yes. Open space ratio. Based on? What, what we did, it was based on a relation to the floor area of the building. No, but what, so it's 61% less than what's required, is what you're saying? No, no, no. It's 59.33 in the compliance column. The actual open space ratio on the site is 61. That doesn't make any sense. No. Double-checked. No, it makes no sense, because it's a relationship to floor area. Your floor area is 4,000 square feet, and the open space ratio would have required an open space of 6,000 square feet. So, you're under by 150%. What we did in order to run the calculation was, we took, and we backed, we were actually able to back into it to make sure we ran the numbers correctly. So, if you take the .61, you multiply it by 3,961.12, which is the square footage on the lot, the actual floor area, you actually get to the amount of open space that is on the lot. Where's the .61 come from? What it came from?
Can you state the amount of open space on the lot?
The amount of open space on the lot was a function of the square footage of open space, which. No, no, no. The actual amount of open space. The actual amount of open space on the lot, have to pull a calculator out, it was 4,000 minus, I can give you the number, but I'd have to actually run the number. It's 2418 square feet of open space. Yeah, minus 1582.22. Right. So, we took that number. So, the number should be the 2418. One, 2,418 square feet is open space that you have on the lot. That's correct. That's how much open space there is, divided by the floor area on the lot, which is 3,961.12 square feet, and that gets us to 61. Does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Double-checked the math. I know the, if you look at the form, it shows 60.44. I have 61, I probably rounded it where he did not. His existing number is off, though. He has 70.31. That is incorrect. It should be 130 for existing. Okay.
2440, so 610, 60%.
Okay. So, I do have revised, if you'd like a revised form to correct, the existing number is 130%. I have it coming to me shortly. In the process. So, we'll put it on for a second call. Wonderful. I should have that. Okay, great. Are there any speakers on this? All right. So, we'll put this on for a second call.
Thank you very much.
Second call? Okay.
Item number 242019-7BZ, 3341 Country Club Road, The Bronx. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please sign in and proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Frank Angelino, on behalf of Fordham Waterfront Holdings and Fordham University on this application. With me is Frances Chester, who is the landscape architect for the project. And certain questions were raised regarding the front gate and the landscaping of the proposal, and she will address them. The landscaping is an issue that Frances Chester will address, the entrance gates she will also address. And just to put it in context, as we've gone through the hearings, the entrance gates were identified as a restoration project, because they have some historic value. This is not a historic district by the New York City Landmarks Commission, but they have historic value for the community. In fact, they are mirrored by the adjacent Villa Maria Academy gates, which also have brick piers and metal gates. So, that we felt that it would be in keeping with the spirit of being contextual with the neighborhood, that everybody, over 500 people attended various hearings that we had in the community and with the community board and the local officials and also the local people.
So, but, so you're saying, brick piers and metal gates, that's not necessarily the same thing as the same gates? Right? If you can, you can repair brick piers and you can put up a new metal gate, unless you're saying it's a, the gate itself is the original 19th century, I don't know what, cast iron, I don't know what, right?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
So, then.
But I will have the architect address that, along with the landscaping.
Okay, thanks.
Frances, introduce yourself.
Frances Chester, I'm a landscape architect, representing the Waterfront Holding Company and Fordham University. So, we'll go, we'll start with the gates, and we'll go back to landscape issues. So, Villa Maria, the character of Villa Maria, brick piers and the metal gates. We have metal gates and we have brick piers. Granted, they're painted and everything like that. They're, they are solid metal gates. And typically, in my experience, my practice, the first approach we try to do is more green approach. And we have taken these gates, you take them down, we send them out to a fabricator, they repair them, they sandblast them, they paint them, they put them back up. And the piers are painted blue, and what, they seem to be solid. And what we like to do is take the, that's why we, we are not, we're saying rehabilitate them versus replace them. The idea would be to sandblast the paint off, re, probably do a regrouding job, and basically get them back to the brick with the caps to match Villa Maria. And so, that's our, when we say reconstruction, we want them to look nice and look good. But as opposed to a total replacement would be, I interpret that as saying, okay, we're going to take them all down and build up from start. So, that would be our approach. We want to keep the character of the neighborhood and be consistent with what is happening over at Villa Maria. So, that.
Understood. What I was just getting, thinking was that the gates are in bad shape, and so beyond restoration ability.
Well, I think we would have that evaluate. I agree, you know, I understand your point, and yes, but, you know, when we take them out, we, you know, we would, of course, have them straightened, and they come back looking, you know, like new. So, that, the first approach, because it is, I think, you know, more of a landscape architect, more environmental, let's, let's go for rehabilitation. If that does not work, the ultimate goal is to have it appear in the same vernacular as what we have Villa Maria, the community is used to that, and to go with that. So, that, that was why we said reconstruction.
Okay.
Rehabilitation.
Okay. The piers, I understand, they look fine, actually.
Except for being blue. Swimming pool blue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
This is Villa Maria. Sorry. Thank you for showing this. The Villa Maria has new metal picket fencing.
It's still, the black, I mean, it might be.
They're not black iron, those are new hollow metal picket fences in front of Villa Maria.
Might, I might, I see it.
And if they are black, they're, they're new. As opposed to rickety old ones that are being restored.
But do you think, I mean, if we take them out, we paint the black, you're saying that you want the.
So, in other words, when we look at the street view of Villa Maria, it's, it looks like a sturdy residential new fence of substance, as opposed to what you see on the subject site, which is these sort of rickety, not great quality, whatever it was at the time period, right? So, the goal isn't to replace, to kind of, it's in certain ways like a waste of money to spend time sanding, repairing, and all that, something that's poor quality, right?
Well, in the process of, of design, when we go through it, we, you know, our ultimate goal is to have black iron fencing with, with the brick pier. In the process of design, once we identify what we're going to do, we go out and we look at pricing versus, you know, the rehabilitation, what it would cost to build them up, or the total replacement. So, I mean, I think if the ultimate goal is to have them not look rickety, which I agree with what your observation is, that we, we're saying to you, yes, we agree, we want this to look right and look good. Personally, compared to a hollow metal gate versus the potential to have a solid metal gate, I would prefer to have a solid metal gate.
I, I agree with you, the, the difference is, what you had said originally was, in the tradition of the Villa Maria, we want to continue the same fence, right? Which isn't actually what's going to happen.
Okay, so what I meant, the character.
Right. So, I'm looking at the, the character of the existing metal fences, and that looks to me like some really budget fences. So, if you were talking about a nice cast iron metal fence, metal picket, that's a completely other subject than the hollow metal picket, which I agree is not as desirable as a new, as a cast, a solid cast iron metal picket. So, so the, the point is that it shouldn't just, it shouldn't look cheesy, right?
And I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
So, I guess what, again, I'll go back to saying, the ultimate goal is to have the look of what we ultimately end up is, in the same vernacular, in the same character of what you see, as opposed to, you know, exactly what the material is and how we achieve that. We would like to have, to leave it open to the fact that we could look at rehabilitating them first, and if that proves to be un, not possible, when we evaluate them, then we would, of course, defer to replacement, in which case, we would probably go to what Villa Maria has. I guess we're just looking for that flexibility to, and also not to demolish the piers, but just.
No, I'm not talking about the piers.
No, I, I understand.
The piers look fine.
I'm talking to the.
Really, the fence looks pretty substandard. It looks like a substandard fence was installed to begin with, and now you're talking about restoring a substandard fence, which is kind of an odd concept. Yeah. All right.
Okay. So, so now we'll speak to the landscape? Do you have more questions? Okay. So, to speak to the landscape and the screening from adjacent properties and everything, I'd, I'd like to just kind of take you through what the process was when I was brought into the project, because screening and views were addressed initially. So, I had this board, which is just, it's the, it's exactly what you have, I've submitted to you, but I kind of composited the pictures onto the plan. So, with regard to screening and.
You take the microphone with you. Sorry.
So, what we did is, we looked, I looked at views from Country Club Road, and, you know, we took into consideration the views from the adjacent properties. This is Villa Maria, this is their parking lot here, this is a residential property with one house here. So, currently, we'll talk about the north property line, the Villa Maria side. Currently, this line from, I put it in red, from here to here, is a six-foot-high brick, the first part is concrete stucco, and the second part is a brick wall. So, I, that addresses all the screening, you know, a six-foot-high wall, and I do have pictures if you need that. They're, they were, there are pictures of it in the Phase 1 report that was submitted. So, that takes you up to basically the two parking spaces closest to Country Club Road. All along here on the Villa Maria side, there is a, a chailing fence, and behind it are mature trees.
On somebody else's property.
On somebody else's property.
That's the key.
Okay. Okay. Let me keep going. I got, I get your concern there. Okay. So, and we also have pavement. On our side, we're paved right up to that line. Now, when you have mature trees, and I'm sure some of you know, trees, the root system for a tree is within what we call the drip line of tree, which are the outermost branches of a tree. So, two, two reasons why I felt it was not possible to put any landscaping along this line. One, we have pavement up there. Two, we have these mature trees. Now, if we go to put landscaping under there, we're going to be cutting into the root system of existing trees, not on our property, but existing trees. And as we all kind of know, that the root system of trees, what sustains a tree. So, in fact, if you dig in here, you're going, you are subjecting our neighbor's trees to damage, and that could result in the decline of those trees. Also, putting a new landscape right underneath them, it's in the shade, so you're kind of limited to how much screening you could get. And two, then you're putting in an immature plant with a mature plant, so you have something we call root competition, and usually, the more mature trees will win out. So, in this instance, I, it didn't make sense, and I didn't feel, one, we could get landscaping in there, and then, two, also, I mean, this is just, it's a parking lot looking under parking there. We're going to talk about the south property line here. This is the residential line. So, the scenario here is, we do have grass, this is about the only lawn or grass we have on the site, and then there is this concrete area. Again, the concrete goes right up to the property line. And we are also providing 18 spaces, as we submitted, for parking. So, we have the nine cars here, the nine cars there. So, we can't really eliminate any of the concrete, and again, we have concrete right up here, mature trees on somebody else's property. So, it was really not an opportunity to get any screening here. This is grass, we theoretically could plant in there, but again, we have this issue of the mature trees. So when I looked at this, I looked at here, which is where plants would be in the sun, they will not be in the shade, and where they really have a chance to survive. So I thought in putting a line of screening, landscape screening down here, that could provide screening from not only Country Club Road, but the neighbors here. This is a residential property. They would not be looking at parking because we have these, this six-foot evergreen barrier here. And again, there's not much that we can do here because we are limited by having pavement up to there and, and having those mature trees on this side. So the other thing I'd like to point out as far as screening and the whole issue of the boat racks and everything is that this handball court area is seven feet lower than the elevation of the road here. Since we were initially here, we've had topographic surveying done of the property, so we know exactly what our elevations are and what the screening is. And that was why I provided this elevation. So this wall here is seven feet and it is what it is depicting the view this way from here. So again, the view into the site, the off-site views are really going to be obstructed by the natural elements of the property.
What about between the two properties, the adjacent property? How does that?
Over here?
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a timber wall that actually holds this up from this property. So this is higher than what's over here. Because this goes up three feet and then it goes up, it goes up seven feet. This wall holds this up seven feet and then this area is a little bit lower. It's on like three feet down there.
So that parking area with nine cars?
This one?
Is elevated from the adjacent residential property?
Yes.
So then it's more visible?
No, no, no. It, it's flat. So it, right here, it's all the same level and then there's a little, a small low tie wall that just lets it come up a little bit from here. Here, you're all the same elevation.
So there's no screening? So you're saying you're relying on the screening of the mature trees?
Yeah, and the, there's the brush below.
Between the parking lot? Did you want to say?
Yeah, I'm looking at the Google Maps image from the home next door, the road in front of the home next door, looking back at the side of your property. And it's September 2018 street view. And there's a gap in the fencing, or the fencing is in very bad condition, just after your brick and iron wall. And so my question is, and so you could see right into that lot. If you can't put landscaping, could you at least put up like a PVC fence of some sort so they don't have to look in there at all?
Are you talking from Country Club Road?
No. No. Alongside your southern lot line. So that one.
This one here?
Yeah. Because they could see right into your lot because the fencing is just inadequate. And even though you do have beautiful trees, the trees are not going to completely block the view. So my question is, can you, since you can't, since you're stating you can't put the landscaping because of the shadowing of the trees, yada, yada, can you put like a PVC fence up along their lot line so they don't have to see anything?
So you want to make that soft?
Ideally, a better material than PVC.
Yeah, but, or wood picket or something so that they don't have to see in at all. Then you, you don't have to worry about having the landscape areas that are already have trees overhanging them.
Right. Because that's always the problem with the, the mature trees. They're very leggy, so they're not actually doing that kind of screening that we're talking about where a property, a resident sits in their backyard and looks out at a parking lot, right? That, that's the issue.
Okay.
Okay. Could also, I, I think probably the footing for a brick wall or something would also affect the tree roots, right?
Top 12 inches of the roots on underneath the tree is where they get their hair, their roots. And in cutting rooms, you open them up for exposure to diseases and illnesses, which is...
So I, I would request the same treatment all along the property line because that's part of the thing. So you have the nine-car parking lot, it's the same issue because it's at the same level. You have the back of the handball court that you're kind of relying on for concealing the boats, but actually the back of a handball court's not a great improvement either, right? It's, and it's not being, what's weird about it is it's not being used as a handball court. So it's sort of this abandoned brick wall or block wall or whatever it is concrete. So it's actually not an attractive screen. So if, instead you treated the entire...
Southern property.
Southern property line.
Southern property.
Yeah. Okay. And then on the northern property line, same question. So how is that? I'm just looking, it says chain link fence on eight-inch brick and concrete block on the northern line, all the way along there.
So we, we have, this is a good wall, the, the wall on the other side.
It says it's, oh, so it just says eight inch, but it doesn't, does it say top of wall anywhere? I don't know how tall it is.
It's six foot, I have a picture, I have a picture. It's a six foot.
Oh, it is?
It is a six foot wall.
Okay. Can you amend the drawings to show the height of these walls? It's just telling us the width of the wall, the thickness of the wall.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we need that.
Okay.
So you're good with the north property line?
Yeah, assuming that we have a wall of substance. If we, you know, I think it's because we don't have photographs of everything. So a lot of this is guesswork, right?
Okay, so...
Can we get photos of the perimeter line? We're just, the issue is always, how are the neighbors affected by these uses, right?
Submit it late. So just, this is the wall that we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
But that's only up to certain...
It's up to the second one. Then we have 85 feet of chain link.
So that's the problem.
Okay.
So the chain link should be replaced with an opaque...
So we'll do whatever we do on the north. On the south property line, we will close out.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the Villa Maria.
Thanks, that's good. Okay.
How many, how many trees you have on the southern property line, along the southern property? Existing trees along the southern property line? The southern?
Other side?
Yeah, yeah.
On the, on the other side? I don't know, but I can show you, I have this, this aerial, which was taken in the winter, which is actually very helpful to see the density of the large trees along the property line. So this is the north side and that's the south side. And you can see how different they are.
This is the southern, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm talking about up there. Because I'm, I'm looking at a street view here.
Yeah, they're big trees.
I, I, yeah, I just can't see this, but like further in.
Yes, it's all the way down the line. This is, so as you go further in on the south side, which is over here, you can see that there's all, all the way up.
What's all the way up?
He's looking for the density of the trees on the, on the side. In this picture, which is actually better that it's winter, you're going to see how...
How regular they are, yeah. And the root, and the root spread is the width of the canopy.
The outer tips of the branch.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm looking at this and I, I just can't see that. If, if there is something like else inside, it should be further that way.
I think this fence, I think this fence is within the property, is, that fence is within the property.
This is not the property.
Yeah, that's the grassy area.
We're actually looking at putting the evergreen screen right on the back of that because we get light and we have some...
Right, okay, that makes sense. So I'm reminded that one of our questions was about the stone pile, we're calling a stone pile wall that's right at the entrance there. What's happening to that next to the front entrance gate with the piers, the blue piers? There's this kind of piles of built-up stone? What is, what's the story there? I don't know if you have it in your photo. We, you can see it on, on our street images. Can you show just that brick pile that's on the right?
Yeah.
Oh, I think those are just...
If you speak, you need to come up.
They're stacked up bricks.
It's just stacked up bricks, okay.
But they would be, no, we would, we're going to make it all...
And the chain link to the right of that is somebody else's property, this sort of rusted chain link, right?
Yeah. It belongs to the residential property.
Okay. All right. Anything else you wanted to add? No?
No.
No, okay. So we do have an issue, a secret issue. And I'm not sure, we're, we're reaching out to DEC, right?
We reached out to Parks and DEP. Parks got back to me and said that they believe it would be an unlisted action based on the floating dock addition. And I haven't heard from DEP. I've researched some similar projects that we also...
Are you sure, yeah? Did you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and not the middle truth? You tell someone before the board and it's a response on the board member question.
Mm-hmm.
We have our environmental representative, Timothy Judge, who has appeared before, but he'll...
Frank, 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 stop, just stop.
Thanks.
Sure. Yes, I'm Timothy Judge with Echo Assessment LLC. I'm an adjunct professor of environmental studies at Ramapo College. And I do a lot of marine permit work. I have this project going on. I have a project in Irvington, New York. I've done dredge projects on the Hudson, work closely with DEC. We've been in front of DEC in a pre-application meeting a couple of years back. I've had conversations with DEC all along, talking with their biologist regarding this project. I've had discussions with National Marine Fisheries, which is part of NOAA, and have talked with not only the National Marine Fisheries Service, but also the Garfo, which is the Great Atlantic Regional Fisheries Office, their Section 7 Endangered Species Act office regarding this project. My preliminary discussions with them, this will fall under a, an no likely adverse effect review by NOAA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So the largest issues that we have regarding installations of docks and floating docks is to maintain at least two feet of depth at mean low-low water above the substrate. We have had bathymetric surveys done of the area. I have the preliminary results, but I don't have the full numbers crunched yet. But we know that wherever that line is of the two-foot depth, we'll be starting our floats past that two-foot depth at mean low-low water to maintain and make sure that those floats always maintain that height above the substrate. You want to protect the Bentha community and that's the main thing that we need to do there. We don't have submerged aquatic vegetation issues. There are not submerged vascular plants in that particular area of Eastchester Bay. There are some emergent plants to the north of the site, but we will not be impacting them.
Okay. So the, I don't know if you're, you would be handling the EAS, but if it's an unlisted action, we need an EAS and obviously your domain will need to be addressed with specificity, right?
Yes, I mean, that will be part of the joint application to the New York State DEC, to Army Corps, subsequently Army Corps feeds to NOAA in terms of review for, on the federal side. And the same review and worksheets for NOAA also go to DEC.
Okay, but we're the lead agency on this application, so we need an EAS submitted to us?
Okay.
Okay, and then we coordinate with those other agencies.
Do you want long form or short form?
Long form, because it's an unlisted action, right?
It's unlisted short form, so...
Oh, it is? Really? Oh, okay.
Okay, so a short form.
Just, just curious, do you know how far in, like offshore, that two-feet line?
Um, there's some distance. It's, it's...
I'm, I'm sorry, at the location of the existing pier?
Of the existing pier. I don't have the exact number with me. As I said, we, we've received some preliminary data, but it takes a long time to crunch all the X, Y, Z coordinates that they get from doing the image review. It's some distance out, so there, you know, our preliminary plan, as you see, shows it coming some distance, a good, a good distance off. This is essentially where the land side ends, right here. And so this is on piers, this is a decking over the, over the water right now. Here's your bulkhead line coming off on either side of that. So you're some distance out until you get to the float.
You can also do a full form if it's above a Type 1 threshold, so you should check the Type 1 list.
Okay. If it's a, if it triggers something above the Type 1 threshold?
Then you definitely need...
Need a long form?
Yeah.
We don't, I, I don't think we're triggering anything in this particular application that would make for a long form.
Okay.
That, that's been my experience with other dock projects and understanding what the biology is of Eastchester Bay.
Okay, but one of the reasons, I think, for this caveat is that this was, application was originally filed as a Type 2, when, which makes no sense because of all of the work on the piers, right? It was filed as a Type 2 where the piers were not being disturbed, right? They...
No, they were being rebuilt and, and in-kind replacement, maintaining the primary footprint and potentially using any of the, any of the piers that were usable. We don't have all of that. We haven't gotten into that. That requires the contractor to help tell us what, you know, what, what is usable and what is not.
But, but there is still this addition of the floating piers.
We, we understand that, that the floating docks, they should not have an adverse impact on the environment because we're maintaining that two-foot here in some of the substrate.
Right, but that's, that's independent of whether you're a Type 2 or, or an unlisted, right?
We're not saying it.
Right.
We have an adverse impact. We're just saying that we should explore that in the EAS.
Right.
So now you, you want a full EAS?
No, that's not what she said. What she said, so let's start over. What she said was, you're at the very least an unlisted action. It should not have been filed as a Type 2 because the piers are not rebuilding existing piers, right? Plus, I think there was other disturbance that qualified.
Floating dock is new.
Right. So that's the first. The second part is, when you start to do your analysis, you may trigger a Type 1 threshold, in which case you then shift into a Type 1 in case that, which case it must be a long-form EAS because that's the law. Okay? All right then. Are there any speakers on this? No? Okay. So time for an EAS and have, to have time to get back to DEC and Parks and I don't know if Army Corps weighs in. I don't know. Okay. Oh, and then the other part of it that I left out is a restrictive declaration. We need a draft of a restrictive declaration submitted to our council's office that commits the, the pledgeee and pledgor to this transaction and understanding that the special permit is void if the, if the transfer doesn't occur and that there's a time limit. We have to figure out what the time limit is. So we need to understand what, what we're talking about in terms of the actual work because otherwise, we don't have the authority to grant the special permit except to an educational institution. Understood? Okay, so you will prepare that draft?
Yeah, if you have.
We don't have, so you will create something and based on other...
I have.
Equivalents? Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else? Did I leave out anything? No? Okay. So I'd say you need some, a bunch of time because we don't have the EAS and we don't have review by those, a, related agencies. So I would put this up for like February or something, right? Is that enough time, you think, basically? So late Feb, late February?
Submission date, February 5th with a continued hearing on February 25th.
We can prepare the EAS short form very quickly. So if we could have an earlier time...
You can submit as soon as possible, but we have to have a turnaround and... And I don't think we're going to have a turnaround earlier than that, is the point. And then you have to respond to their response.
Okay, well, we'll submit that as soon as it's ready.
Okay.
And the rest of the materials on February-
Well, no, no, no. You should submit the restrictive declaration as soon as possible, so, because that also has a turnaround. You should submit that to council's office, so they'll have comments to run back and forth, right?
So the EAS and the restrictive deck should be submitted as soon as possible?
Yes.
The plans can be by February 5th?
Yeah.
February 1st. 5th. Mm-hmm. And the hearing date?
February 25th.
25th. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 25, 2019-20BZ, 1933 East 14th Street, Brooklyn.
And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Of course.
I should have it like recorded.
Good afternoon. Lara Altman from the office of Lara Altman. We had somebody attend your executive session yesterday, and I don't believe there were any outstanding issues.
No. So then, are there any speakers on this? I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the standard condition. Removal of more than 50% of the exterior walls on the, to remain on the exterior will void the special permit. Oh, okay. Say that again?
The DOB to ensure compliance of the existing non-compliant side yard with respect to the addition of external insulated wall material.
Right, okay. All right, so on that motion, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 26, 2019-49BZ, 2214 North 14th Street, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein for the applicants. We had somebody yesterday's review session. The question yesterday, as well as the question for the last thing, was in regards to the use group 6 and the accessory terrace space at the first floor. Subsequent to yesterday's hearing, we reviewed Section 7336 and realized that the restriction for the board to approve an outdoor space is limited to, or focused on roofs upon further review. The outdoor terrace space, which is at the ground level of this building with nothing below it and is in fact covered, is a terrace and not a roof. And therefore, it's our opinion that the board does have the authority to grant this as a accessory PCE space. That proposal was noted. We changed the statement of facts to reflect that the terrace space is at the first floor accessory to the BSA. That's in our statement of fact at page 2.
To the PCE?
To the, sorry. To the PCE. We noted at the bottom of page 2 in a footnote that, as noted on the proposed condition plans, the first floor outdoor space is considered a terrace, not a roof. And that DOB is to ensure that the terrace space is compliant with accessory PCE space. This is also noted on Sheet A003 with a note that says the same thing. We've also updated the plans to put a thicker line on the exterior walls to delineate the exterior walls. All this is signed and sealed and dated as of yesterday.
Yay. Okay.
Bravo.
Okay.
And also, nothing about the definition of physical culture establishment seems to contemplate it being only an interior use.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah, we're not sure where this roof concern came from.
Well, Section B, I believe, is that a roof, it specifically talks about a roof and open to the sky. So the concern was-
No, 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 we understand that. Mr. Steinhaus is clarifying that when the board reviewed the language in the special permit about roof, about roof occupancy, it didn't mention anything about exterior space, some kind of evil that had to do with exterior, exterior space. So that's why we're not believing that we have to grant anything unusual and don't have the authority to about that exterior space.
Right.
All right then. So are there any speakers on this one? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 27, 2019-50BZ, 116 Dwayne Street, Manhattan. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? I'll answer the neighbor.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein for the applicant. As a threshold matter, I apologize for the late submission. It's something that I endeavored not to happen in my firm, and it was something that was beyond my control. I'll try not to let it happen again. I truly do apologize. That said, I heard the comments at yesterday's review session. We did provide the acoustical test. There's no conclusion paragraph, but there's an executive summary at the beginning of the report, which gives the conclusions that per the noise code, there was no issue with noise and per the vibration. There's no perceptive vibration that caused issues as well. So it's page start to-
Yeah, I saw that.
So we did have it. I apologize if it wasn't clear. The test was done, as I mentioned in my documents. We scheduled through the building with the tenant that had the issues to be at the appointed time at the appointed place. We showed up. No answer at the door despite hearing the TV. I made sure to be there myself so that I can provide testimony today to that fact. We made arrangements with the neighbor to do it in their house at the wall that is closest to the complaining neighbor. It's a loft-style building, so the floor is a continuous floor. The closet's not really a closet. It's a space that at certain point they put, you know, a door and a wall around. But it's a, the floor is a continuous floor throughout, like it is on our floor, on, on our level. We put it at the closest wall, and we had a normal 24-hour gym cycle. We didn't tell anyone what we were doing, and I gave you the log of the exercises, which is typical exercise and typical class size. We believe that's the best we could have done under the circumstances and did make a good faith effort to address the concerns that were raised at the last year.
Yeah, I think we agree. I just want to see, are there any speakers on this? So, you know, we did, we did get a letter from the complaining neighbor, but I do have to say, when they don't let you into the apartment to do testing that's being complained of, I don't know what to say, so, so therefore, are there? Then I asked if there were speakers, any comments from the board? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that the noise levels are maintained below perceptible levels to protect the neighbors from nuisance or something to that effect.
Noise and vibration.
Yeah, noise and vibration, yeah. Okay, so on that motion, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New, should I take a lunch break? Oh, second call?
Oh, yeah, we can do- Is she ready for a second call? I don't know. You want a lunch break or go through this?
Let's just do the second call and-
And then take a break?
She's not ready.
She's not ready. Do you want to take a- Yeah. 30-minute lunch break?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll be back at 2:00, okay?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record. Please take your seats. Item number 1, new cases on the zoning calendar. Item number 1, 2018-91BZ, 7880 Leonard Street, Manhattan. We're to sign in, you don't have to be sworn in. Okay?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is John Overland. I'm associated with Clyde and Slowick, DLLC, for the applicant crunch LLC. Our application is fully submitted. I request, I respectfully request an adjournment of this hearing, however-
Postponement?
Not adjournment. I'm sorry.
Because we haven't heard it yet.
Postponement, I'm sorry. Postponement for this application, because we need to reissue the notice of hearing.
Okay. So then?
All right. So submission date, or due notice of hearing, and then the hearing will be on January 14th.
So do it well in advance, so you don't-
The 14th, I'm sorry to confirm, the 14th of January?
January 14th, 2020.
Thank you very much.
Using the BSA new notice that you'll receive.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it legalization?
No. Oh.
A new one. Application for a permit for them to operate as a gymnasium.
All right, so, okay. That's what we want to know. Does it exist already?
It does.
So we need posting then also. I'll talk to you, John.
Yeah, it needs to be posted in the lobby of the building also.
Very well, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Doesn't say legalization, yes?
No, needs to.
Item number 2, 2019-21BZ, 2223, East 14th Street, Brooklyn. Oh, it's your date today, Frank. Do you raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Okie dokie.
Hello, everybody. My name is Frank Noriega. Here from Sheldon Nobel PC on behalf of the applicant, the owner of 2223 East 14th Street, Block 7375, Lot 62, in Community District 15 in Brooklyn. We are here asking for a 622 special permit today. There's a currently an existing 933 square foot, single-family home on the lot with existing non-compliant side yards at 3 feet and 3 feet 8 inches and a non-compliant front yard at 6 feet 8 inches. What we're proposing is to enlarge building both horizontally and vertically to maintain those existing non-compliant side yards. And also extend to the maximum permitted under the special permit to 20 feet within the, to the rear lot line. Total of the building would be at FAR of 1.325, which is, we believe, a moderate ask, considering the, the floor and the area is definitely not the largest floor area ratio. Some of the, within 8, 400 feet of the existing building, we have floor areas as high as 1.8 and the prominent FAR, at least on the existing block on 15th Street, is about 1.6. As far as the questions raised by the board, I'll just jump into those. What we are asking for as far as height, we are not asking for anything beyond what is permitted as of right. We understand that we have to look at character of the neighborhood as well. And clearly, the buildings immediately next to us are shorter buildings. There are three 622 applications in the area which have been granted. One in particular at 2257 East 14th Street across the street is immediately adjacent to a 17-foot-high building, very similar to our location, and was permitted to go up to a height of 35 feet. We are only going to 32 feet, which is below the maximum height. I know there was a question also about expanding the second story, the full 20 feet towards the lot line, because we made the representation that Lot 11 had a similar condition where there's only a 19-foot yard, more or less adjacent to ours. And as the board pointed out, the, there is a satellite image. It looks like the first floor extends, and that's where the measurement's from. Our consultants who did the drawings for the 19-foot yard have explained that they do not believe that is included, from what their measurements are. And if you compare that to the lot next door, which also has a 19-foot yard, they do not have the same condition, where it extends to the first floor. This is also represented this odd condition in the rear yard photographs that we have submitted, specifically 5, 6, and 16. You can see that the, many of these buildings that front on 15th Street have this portion on the second story where the second story is actually permits, or projects farther than the first floor, which is what establishes the rear yard.
So before you go on, so you're talking it through? You can't, you have to provide imagery, data, research, et cetera, to do that, okay? If I just look at the satellite image as opposed to what you're saying, the satellite image shows the second floor of those buildings to the rear of this building with a little projection forward of the original wall of the first floor. But then, there are all of these additions at the first floor added to the building. So the only way you can support the claim that those are 19-foot rear yards to the second floor is by measuring them.
We can absolutely double-check that, but if you look at the photographs provided, there aren't first-floor additions on most of those. There is one on lot-
Then, then the camera that flies in space is misinforming.
Sorry, I should also note that if you look at the camera and you zoom in a little bit closer from what we're seeing, it's not really an extension, more that it's an awning. So from above, it does look like some sort of extension.
Okay, so let's-
Put that aside, all right.
You're going to have to measure those and show us what the measurements are too. Because at the moment, I don't see a 19-foot rear yard happening in, behind these buildings. So, yeah, so we need proof. Okay, in terms of the, so, and by, and by pulling back the second floor, which is what we typically do, you'll reduce the size of the ask. And so that would put the attic more in line with that 20% increase, so underneath the sloping roof?
Correct. And to address the 20%, the 20% clearly does apply the normal standard. 0.75 FAR would normally apply in this. You can exceed it by 20% if it's under a sloping roof. I mean, the board has full discretion to grant FARs above that, regardless of whether or not it's a sloping roof.
It does. This is a massive building, and it's like overwhelming the existing building. These are little, so the, the other part of it is, these are little one-story houses lining this whole block. You need to do a study that supports the argument that the, that the, so don't forget, it's the floor area request that enables the height and depth of this building. So the, it enables all of those things. Without the floor area waiver, you don't get the height and you don't get the depth. So, so you need to justify the height of this building proposed in, in concert with what's going on on the block. And there are no studies provided that establish that.
All right, well, I, just to chime in on that, the photographic streetscape provided, clearly, if you look at the drawings and the plans, the immediate buildings are one story. As you get farther out of the, on the social block, you see that more buildings start to become these two-stories, sloped roofs, getting closer to 35 feet. Now, it wasn't presented in the application, but you go one block further south.
No, 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 stay on the social block. So stay on the social block, both sides of the street, and rather than talking us through it, show us.
Sure. Well, I mean, you, I assume you do have the photographic streetscape in front of you or have access to it? Again, there are, there have been multiple 622 applications on this lot. I will say that. Three, in fact, in total. The height, if we're just sticking at height, they have been approved at 32 feet, 35 feet.
On the block itself.
On the social block.
Look at the block. What does the block show you when you walk down the block? Not what was approved and all that. What's built? what was approved and all that. What's built?
Correct. And these are 32, yeah, I'm sorry. These are approved buildings and built on the social block that are 32 feet tall, 35 feet tall, and as of right, without a special permit, at 27 feet tall. And again, these buildings could be enlarged to 35 feet tall, but have not been done so yet. We also have another DOB as-of-right job at 2268 that's 34 feet tall. Another building at 33 feet tall at 2226. Another 622 special permit at 2224, 30 feet tall. Another one at 2220, 37 feet tall. This is just on the social block. Using the photographic streetscape, you have to look beyond just what's immediately left and right of us because clearly if that were the case, we wouldn't be able to build beyond 17 feet, which is, we can do that as of right. Again, it's just a matter of establishing more FAR. And I think if you look at the FAR study, which goes again beyond the social block, we are well within the range of numbers. We're not asking for anything beyond what's already there, but we are asking for a substantial amount. We're not kidding ourselves. We are asking for what is, I believe, 40%, 46% more than was normally permitted.
Right. Okay. So, I don't know. So there's a few, I'm just looking at the, on the east, on East 14th Street, on the odd numbers side, because you don't have any on the, oh, sorry, it doesn't go by odd numbers, does it? It's all on one side of the street. So towards the, towards one end, you have 30, 32, and 35. And everything else is much lower.
And 27.
Yeah. But you're not asking for 27, right? So you're asking for something on the very high end of one, as far as I can tell. Right? And so, so that, that's the thing. So it's about, and I don't want you to do this like in the, in the air. I want you to do this with a little more time. Look at the, look at the streetscape and make an argument for your height based on what's the, what's kind of typical of the taller buildings, right? As opposed to just saying there's one that's 35. Because that's anomalous then if there's only one at 35. And you're asking, what are you asking for?
32, I believe.
You're asking for...
Let me give the exact height for you.
You're asking for 31.2. Okay. All right. So there's an argument that could be made that's makeable. You need to make it.
Absolutely. And we can certainly put that in writing, but it's just as a practical matter, if there are three on the social block that have 622 that are...
No, 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 no. It's not about the 622. It's what do we see on the social block?
But, but if, Mike may continue a little bit. If those were permitted and the same rationale applies to them, would it not be true that the board has found that these, this height is acceptable in the social block?
Well, yes. Based on the evidence and the record, I mean, unless you've examined all of these cases and looked at the neighborhood character studies and yours were up to the same quality, I don't see how you could say that, I believe you're saying that it would be arbitrary to deny this height.
Well, I wouldn't go far as to say that. I just would present that, that they have been permitted before and this is an as-of-right height, which I understand ties into the floor area. But we're focused on the height, not the floor area.
So I would just get off of the routine about it was granted before. You have plenty of evidence on this site. Put together your evidence and stop arguing about whether there was a grant before because the grant before is not a good route to go. My, my opinion about the prior grants is it's had the effect of wrecking neighborhoods. And so the role of this special permit is to not essentially do harm to the neighborhood. So when you can look, there's already a neighborhood character established, then pick up on that. Stay away from whether or not a permit's been issued before because I would argue the finding wasn't met on those, on some of those.
And so then we'll come back with a second. In regards to the, we touched on it briefly, as regards to pulling back the second floor. If we can establish that it is indeed a 19-foot in similar situations along 15th Street, which we are adjacent to, you still have a problem with...
I do because you've got a 36-foot rear yard on your, on two, you have a 37-foot rear yard on one side of your site and a 36-foot rear yard on the other side of your site. And you're relying entirely on the 19-foot yards that are not even backing up to this site.
So I just want to be clear so I can take this back to both the applicant and the design architect.
So the standard is then you can, you can justify a one-story extension and then the second floor has to set back five feet and the attic has to comply with the regulations.
Five, you can still go 25 feet.
25 to the second floor.
To the second floor. Perfect.
And the attic has to pull back.
And just as far as rationale, it's to protect the side neighbors as well as the real lot owners as well?
Yes, of course. Because in fact, one guy, Lot 63, would be completely socked in by your building if it went all the way out as far as you're proposing because the building at number five has a, has a legal rear yard at Lot 5, has a legal rear yard and is blocking off the view through to that rear yard. So imagine what it would be like to be all enclosed by this building.
Fair enough. And we will definitely be submitting a study both on the rear yard. Just, well, I guess if we don't need to address that, we don't need to address that.
No.
I will definitely relay the concerns about the second story to the applicant and the, and then we will certainly submit a study to justify the height.
Yeah.
But we will need some additional time to do that. Are there any other questions that...
Well, let's hear. Are there any speakers on this one? No. Okay. I think that was, any other comments from anybody?
I just asked that on your zoning chart, you provide the open space and lot coverage in square feet because I'm not arriving at the same percentages as previously proposed.
So you want it both, both percentage and lot, or square footage?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's a, it's a way of checking.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because we're aware that no one knows how to, is this an open space ratio plan?
No, flat, straight up.
No. No, this is just open, this is lot coverage. Okay.
How long will that take?
We would love to get this on as soon as possible. We will do everything in revised plans ASAP.
Okay. Please submit by Jan, or December 24th for continued hearing on January 14th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number three, 201975BZ704 Broadway Manhattan. Are you the only one speaking? Okay. The team, please come forward. Oh, you do, John? Okay. Sign your name, please. And then I'll swear you. Oh, you do? Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to all member questions?
Can do.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Frederick K. Becker for the property owner in Bright Horizons Daycare Center. I have with me Mr. Adam Thinger, who is here in the event that I can't answer anything that you may have. But I'll start with what we got from your executive session yesterday.
Who is Adam Thinger?
He's Director of Operations. We will provide chapter and verse that this in fact meets the criteria for a school or the daycare center in an amended statement of facts. In a particular order, just going through, with regard to the concern with in...
Sorry, just to go back to that, it's not just a statement of facts. It should have other evidence, supporting evidence as well.
Right. Right. Supporting evidence, that's the record that was referred to in the resolution, right? The record shows that the, that it is a, what is it, an Article 47 daycare center, therefore meets the requirements of Section 12-10. And so you have to have something that shows that you're an Article 47 daycare center.
Right. I understand. Right. Besides saying that, that how we fit into the criteria, I'll give a, more than just a statement saying, as you said, we're Article 47, et cetera, we'll say why we are. We'll say how we meet the criteria.
You may probably, may have some sort of a, there should be a permit or something that indicates. If you speak, you have to come up. Yeah, you're welcome to come up, but you have to identify yourself and...
We have many other facilities in the city where we have daycare licenses.
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thomas Adam Thinger.
Okay. So we'll, we'll give you required, besides just a statement. We'll give you statement plus proofs. Understood. Not a problem. With regard to the issue of children in the cellar level, we, our policy, and I spoke to Chief Daly about this, we do not have anyone who is younger than two years of age in the cellar and pursuant to code and pursuant to Fire Department regulations, you can have children who are two years or older, one floor above or below. So that is unacceptable. We won't, we won't have less than two years old. The issue with the strollers is as follows. Stroll, children are brought to the premises by the appropriate individual, parent, nanny, guardian, et cetera. They are brought in the stroller directly to the classroom. And then once they are dropped off in that particular classroom, that individual then takes the stroller and puts it into the stroller room.
So is it a guardian, parent who drops the kids in the classroom?
Yes. They're brought individually. We don't have buses or anything like that. So whoever's coming is brought by the responsible individual, shall we say. So that, so again, they, you know, they, they walk in, they don't carry their toddler in their arms down to the cellar level. They take them by stroller and then they take the stroller upstairs, put it away, and then they pick them up. With regard to trash storage, we do have a space in the cellar which talks about a refrigerated area. We will label the plans accordingly to indicate perishable food storage. We, the food is very limited. We don't provide meals to any of the children. The MMZ room, which we mentioned in this statement, I probably just lost, is called a movement matters zone. And that's sort of the recreation area for the different classrooms to go and use sort of like a quasi-gymnasium.
So wait, so it means that the same kids who came from Classroom A go into this MMZ room? So you don't have kids in both rooms?
No. It's, it's a non-simultaneous use. So, right, the toddlers are brought in at 10 o'clock and then they come out and the next group comes in at 11 o'clock and they're, you know, accompanied by their teachers and aides. So it's a, basically, it's a, think of it as, again, like a school gymnasium, which just has non-simultaneous use with the classroom.
Okay.
With regard to the circulation flow, no child is allowed to move, let alone, I don't want to say wander or roam, but no children goes through the premises unaccompanied by anyone else. So there's no issue of older children running into younger children. Everyone is accompanied by an adult. The staircase in the middle of the space is an existing staircase and that's just going to remain because it exists.
Yeah, but, so how do you deal with access to the cellar? You're going through a public... So that's our understanding.
It's not a public, that's only, the middle, if I'm referring to the correct staircase, my understanding, if I look at the plans, if I look at page PO1, the, the staircase, like, let's go look to page P, the staircase only goes upstairs. It doesn't go downstairs. It's only, if you look at page PO2...
Right. How do you get to the cellar?
The cellar is all done by internally through, there's a staircase.
The staircase is an internal stair unless it's missing from the drawings. It's a stair that's shared by the, the building residents. You can't have that.
The, the one that, from the MMZ...
Stay tuned in for the record.
Adam Thinger?
He just...
From the MMZ down to the cellar, that, that only serves, connects our, the Bright Horizons space.
It's not the egress stair.
For this one run of the stairs.
If you look at page PO2, if you go to page PO2, you'll see the area on the top of the plan to the left is, which is hatched, is the public stair. And yet the stair that is a little further going to the right, which is above the second stair that has an L shape, that is only an internal stair for our space.
Okay. Just so I understand. So the internal stair is the ones that's the L shape that is going to the mezzanine?
That is one of the two internal stairs.
Right. The second one, which has, which says egress stair for JLWQA residents above and secondary mezzanine egress, that's the one I'm referring to?
No, that's an upstairs case. But if you notice, there's a break line and it says... So in other words, that is not a, it's, there's a downstairs case. The downstairs is separate from the upstairs case. They are on top of each other.
Scissors here.
No, no. So that only goes down?
Correct.
To the cellar, I see. But, and how do you then...
The other one goes down? The one to the top of the page also goes down? How do you get to the cellar?
No. Okay, the cellar is, if you look on page PO2...
No, I mean, how does the resident and the joint live work get to the cellar?
They would go into another, the other staircase, which is part of the, that's... Okay, they're saying, how do they get?
Okay, I see. Okay.
I quite honestly don't know. How the, the building, the residential, which stair goes down...
So the building at the entrance is at zero elevation and there's a set of stairs that goes up to a height of three foot six and that is the staircase that is this... No, is it?
That's a common stair that serves.
Okay. And that's the three foot six that goes... And so to exit from the school, you would have to take the extreme end staircase, which is at zero foot elevation, to go up to three foot six and then again take the stair down by the elevator and then go out as a means of egress, fire means of egress.
That's a secondary means of egress.
As a secondary means of egress, I will have to go through two set of doors, go to the drawing which says zero, zero elevation up. I have to go up to an elevation of three foot eight. Then I have to take the stair down around the elevator and then out the door. It wasn't very clear from the...
You're talking about egress. I'm talking about how you not mix the kids with the tenants of the building.
I think, I think because this staircase is only going down from this, so do you have that? So this staircase is only going down?
Into the cellar, right?
Into the cellar.
What other staircase goes down into the cellar? None?
That's, it would be this one here.
The other egress stair from the cellar is, is towards the front of the building on the, towards the bottom of the page.
It's in the proposed one. If you go to drawing number PO1. I get it.
They, the other, in other words, if you're, if you're a JLWQA residence on the upper floors, you use the staircase on the bottom of the plan, which is part of there at the lobby, which is distinct from us. You don't, you don't interact. There's, there's no interaction with the public above or the public into us.
The only interaction is in lobbies.
The only thing would be the...
What do you mean in the lobbies?
In the event of emergency egress.
Emergency egress only.
In the event of emergency egress, the stair that's going up, let's see, that's a down. In the event of emergen, what does this one say? Down? How do you get down from the cellar? There's a incorrect designation on the drawing. It shows there, unless there's a subcellar.
There is.
There is actually a subcellar as well.
There's a subcellar. Okay. So more confused. All right. So there is a staircase in the cellar, I mean, the cellar, it's PO1, that comes into, okay, that the daycare, that the daycare center can get to. It goes down into a subcellar.
No, we can't. No. There's a, there's a door there that connects, but, but we would not ever...
It's a locked.
It's locked door. There's no reason.
It's a locked door. So, so are you saying it's for maintenance only and then the, like, building super inside and...
I don't know that the...
It's an existing door and then...
No, I know.
I guess it's just for, for maintenance, yes.
So there's also a down staircase at the bottom. So there's also a down staircase at the bottom. So maybe they can both go that way?
Mm-hmm.
Building and daycare trash. Oh, okay. I don't know. Okay. And then P O.1. So this one goes up, this one goes down to the cellar. This one goes up to outside. So you're saying that the emergency egress that's at the top, there's a convenience stair on the interior?
Correct.
This is the first floor. Okay. So there's no reason to take that staircase. So when would you be mixing in the lobby? That's the part I'm not really getting.
God forbid, an emergency.
No, no, but when? So you're at grade, and you just go out the front door?
At the front door, which says vestibule.
And then the only other way, oh, is out that egress stair and up a flight. So there's a whole change. I don't get it.
You can also, let just, you can all, there's a third means of egress. Towards, if you look towards the bottom of page P O.2, where it says building service lobby, there is a direct door which is locked.
That's the lobby that you're talking about?
That's the second. So there are three...
That's the real second.
That's the real second. You're going straight at grade, straight through the lobby, straight out the front door. At grade. You're not going up and down.
Because what's the driver is this one that gets you from zero to three, and then to three, and then down to zero. I see you going up to go down.
Right, but the likelihood is, God forbid, you would use the other one, which goes straight out the door. And plus, you can go straight down the corridor. So it's in a sprinkler building and all of the above.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other item that I think is outstanding, and I could be mistaken, is D E P. I spoke with our environmental consultant, who Ms. Fenke is probably working with Amber, and she tells me that things have been going back and forth. We are hoping, I think, to supply something shortly, and we think we'll have responses back by middle, early January.
D E P or D O T?
D E P. D E P.
Oh, the D E P noise and air quality?
It's more, it's more the issues of...
It's all referred to.
Right. It's been referred to both, but D E P is more of an issue. There have been spills in the area. We have to do some borings and do the vapor testing, et cetera, et cetera. We don't think there'll be issues, but we're following proper protocol. And again, based on timing and what's gone out, and the environmental consultant's experience, she's with Equity Environmental, she's, everything has been sent out. They're hoping for responses by December, early January.
They haven't sent out the air quality yet because there was something missing.
I think they have to do the borings, possibly. So, but that's all been lined up with the building. They're ready to drill the slab imminently. So that'll go out probably in a couple of weeks at most.
Are there any speakers on this one?
We have a question.
I have a question about some notes on the plans. It looks like there are some proposed plans that might relate to P C Es, about 44-inch clear pathways, Lula 5887 compliance. I don't know if those were specific notes from the Fire Department?
No, I may have, I thought I picked up the proper notes for daycare center. I will review the notes and just, oh. You're looking at, under the general notes?
Yeah, there are general notes and daycare-specific notes as well.
Right, okay. I'll just see what's right and what's wrong and remove if we have a fine.
Can you...
Okay.
Yeah. On P zero one, the stairs that, this is the cellar plan, the stairs to the top, do you have a flight going down to the subcellar or?
Yes, there is a flight to the subcellar as well, correct.
There are actually two stairs.
But it's not within our space per se. It's, it's not, it's only accessible through a locked door, but there is a subcellar.
So you're gonna have people coming from the subcellar?
Never, never.
So why do you have that?
Because it exists in the building. It's an existing stair.
You don't, you, the...
You know what's confusing about it is, it's not part of the tenant's space. Maybe that's what's confusing. Your hatching is indicating not in contract, right? And I see, maybe that down staircase into the subcellar that's not part of your domain should also be hatched. That would clarify.
Yeah, that'll clarify.
Because we also have a down staircase towards the bottom of the drawing, whichever way that is. South.
Right, which is not part of us.
Which is also hatched, so for consistency's sake.
Absolutely. I understand the confusion. Okay.
And come to think of it, since you're using a Lula, right, to get to the lower level, you don't need to have included the elevators, the tenant elevators.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, those are freight elevators.
Right, they're not on...
They're hatched on month one.
On P O.2, they should be hatched.
So for consistency, I know that occasionally you'll use a freight elevator, but it's not the...
No, no, it should, it should come off. It should not be there. I mean, it should be there, but not white.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's good. All right. Everything else staying here? Okay, so...
So if we can get a hearing in, oh, the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, John Daly, Fire Department. I have reviewed this application with our Public Buildings Unit. They're responsible for inspection of daycares, and they've been through many of our Bright Horizon site, and they're very good. They just wanted me to inform the board, of course, that children from ages zero to two not permitted in the cellar, and if the board can condition it some way verbally. Also in addition, they have their notes for the firearm. They're putting in devices for the space. We are going to recommend that they add one more device, a water flow switch, which will monitor, you know, any water flow from the sprinkler system. If a sprinkler head is activated up on the 10th floor, at least it'll send a signal to the daycare, and they can start evacuating the children from the site. I do need to do, conduct an inspection, because I don't know how the sprinkler system is fed. I know there is a stamp pipe, and that does have a gravity tank, but I don't know if the sprinkler is fed by either street or gravity. I do plan to visit that site sometime this week. I'll let Mr. Becker know where we would like the water flow switch relocated.
Okay. Great. So you'll issue another letter, a letter, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we'll add a note to the plans accordingly based on this letter.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Great, so...
Can we do a hearing sometime?
Just to clarify that, to the Fire Department, you're okay with the play area that's in the basement? Because that would be used by...
No, play area?
That, that gym, whatever the...
No, no, the MMZ gym, that's on the first floor?
That's in the cellar.
That's in the cellar?
Yeah.
Oh. Good point.
Adam Thinger. The MMZ that's in the cellar would only be used by the older kids whose classrooms are down there. You would not bring the infants downstairs.
Okay. Okay. So a condition then will be no, no children under the age of two, right, in the cellar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what source?
We get a mid-February date possibly? Please?
Is it also including two-year-olds?
It's two and up.
Two and under.
Two years old and up, right? When you hit two, you can be in the cellar.
I think...
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, so please submit January 22nd for a continued hearing on February 11th.
February 11th.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, 2019-161 B Z 55 Prospect Street, Brooklyn. Revised submission was submitted yesterday? Last night? Early this morning? I don't remember.
Yeah.
Sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to answer the board member questions?
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. We had someone at yesterday's review session. We submitted a submission in response to comments. The first comment, the Fire Department asked us to provide a plan that showed the egress from the cellar to the first floor. We pulled the plan back to show the full footprint showing the egress through the stairs and noting the fire rating on the doors, and F B N Y issued a letter of no objection.
Wait, wait, slow down. Show us, where did you do that?
I'm sorry?
Where did you do whatever you said?
On the floor plans, so...
Which floor plan?
Yeah, sheets two and three.
So what did you show?
We were asked to show the full footprint to show that where the egress paths are beyond our space. So we pulled our space back to show a larger footprint, and we showed the two-hour rating and the 90-minute rating for the fire ratings.
I'm nuts.
If you look at page three.
On page three?
You know, normally we see that, oh, I see, the egress, maybe it's something about how it was rendered. It's a very thin line. Now that's showing sort of these light rectangles.
That's the printing. If you look at the electronic copy, it's much thicker. Ian printed it this morning to try and get the hard copies submitted. I apologize. But it is, it does show that within the space, this three-foot clear pathway, we were asked to show outside of the space, from the cellar to the first floor, the egress paths, and we showed it with the rating. And in response, the Fire Department issued their L and O.
So in future, the hatching or whatever it is should go all the way up the stairs? Because what it does is it disappears once you're outside of the gym space?
You mean the three foot?
The three foot, the route disappears once you're outside of the gym space.
So the route, yeah, the route, the way we show it, the route is just to show the three-foot clear space within the studio.
No, I know, but then...
But I understand your point.
You have to surmise where to go.
Understood, and I can make those changes in the future.
And in fact, one takes you to nowhere. One takes you to a corridor next to the elevator, and then leads you to die.
Right, the other one is...
If you, if you hang a quick left in front of the elevators, there's a staircase right there that takes you outside. So... No, but there's another exit stair that goes to nowhere.
You're not using that if you're, it doesn't go to nowhere. It wraps around the whole building, kind of a circular route, but that's not your second means. Hopefully not.
There's one. No. It's blocked off by walls. I know, this one takes you to nowhere. Exit. Then you have to go all the way around like this, and all the way around like that, and there. I think that's probably longer than they allow.
Yeah, you go up to the back wall of the building and circle all the way around. That's, you're not going out that way.
Might be longer than they allow to travel to...
That's not the exit that we'd use, though. There's an exit to the left of the floor plan. That's the exit you'd use. The next question, if I may, is with regards to A V A access. Where ground level are gyms? When you come in, if you need to use or want to use the elevator, you tell one of the employees at the gym. There's a lift and a ramp to get into the main lobby. It's a commercial lobby. Those elevators are accessible to our space.
But how does that work? If you tell somebody at the gym, do they give you a key card?
No, they'll escort you upstairs. They'll escort you through the lobby to the gym.
Oh.
It's done, in these commercial buildings, we do this a lot. And when you exit the elevators at the cellar, there's an entrance to the studio right by the elevators.
So is there something posted at the front, at the entrance that says call so and so forth? Because in your statement that you submitted yesterday, you said that the...
Well, we have, on the ground floor, we have employees. When you walk in, there's a reception.
You can't walk in, there's a step.
Not in our space. To our space. We're on the ground floor from the sidewalk.
No. You have P C entrance, shows a step, two steps before you get into the lobby.
I was there, and I don't believe so. No, you can see from the pictures, it's on three.
Well, then, correct the drawings, because it's showing two steps. Okay, the drawings show two steps.
I'm not sure, actually. That may just be the step back of the building one. I'm not sure. The other spaces on either side of us actually have steps. But our space, the front door is on grade. So you'll go in, tell the employee at the desk that you want to use the elevator. They'll pick you upstairs to the elevator. And then, when you get down to the cellar, there's a door marked for, you'll be with an employee, but the cellar entrance is right by the elevators, and there's a door marked, you know, at 45 right there.
Sorry, where's the door that takes you from the elevators?
When you get out of elevator number four at the cellar?
Yeah.
The door that's marked exit in the studio?
What are those? Yeah. What's this, the horizontal line with the, I don't know what these things are. The horizontal line that sort of looks like a measuring scale, a ruler?
It's painted on. It's like a, they call it the sled track. It looks like turf with the sled, yes. We have that in because we've been asked recently to put, to show where equipment may be, or how it's going to be laid out. It's nothing built up. It's kind of like painted on turf.
Okay. Sleds are there, but they're pushed up?
Yeah, but the sleds are not in front of the door either, and there's a clear exit passageway to that space, to the door as well. With regard to the, as a matter of housekeeping, we did do the lobby notice, and it was submitted, and I gave copies this morning as well of the lobby notice. The space itself is directly under the commercial lobby, and there's a small part of it that's under Blue Stone Lane, which is, if you look at the ground floor, there to the right of us is a coffee cafe, and they have a full liquor bar. We have an affidavit of in support that I got today from Blue Stone, saying that they have no issue with us, and we've had no issue with the lot. The existing construction provides enough sound attenuation. The existing makeup provided enough that with the noise and the sound that does go on in the gym, we haven't had any complaints, and we don't disturb anyone. So that's why we felt that in this circumstance, all other cases that you'll see, maybe not, in this circumstance, it was sufficient. But we did do the lobby notice. The board has proof of it, and I do have the affidavit.
Well, if there was just, when did you do the lobby notice?
Is that a lobby, or is it?
That's the main lobby to the commercial building. That's where they posted it.
When, when was the lobby notice?
October 10th or 18th, or something like that.
Oh, okay. It's not at I level, though. You know that, right?
That's where they, where the building allows, that's where the D O B permits are, and that's where the notice was allowed to be placed. But I do have...
It's a beautiful building.
Objection for in support from Blue Stone, which would be only commercial tenant correctly above us. We got this morning in response to questions.
It just says, they checked the I support the app.
No, there's actually I so-and-so.
Oh, they have been good neighbors. We have no issues with your operation. I'm the manager of Blue Stone Lane, the commercial tenant directly above F 45.
I will take that back to submit it, because I didn't have a lot of time. So, and I made all the changes to reflect the elevator and the egress and the noise, sound attenuation in my statement of fact, which was submitted. I believe that's all the questions.
Is everybody okay with this? But just for your...
Yeah, I understand the point.
...education, please make it very clear which, what the exit passageway is, all the way up the stairs and out to the street for future.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, so I'd like to make, did I ask if there are speakers on this? And I'd like to make a motion. What?
Music.
Oh, yeah. Just wanted to know about how the music...
So I put it in my statement of fact, the last thing I said, I did respond to that. We do have a sound system, and we do have coaches that amplify sound. However, given the sound attenuation that's in place, and the fact that we've been operating for a while and we have had no issues with our neighbors, we feel that it's sufficient.
Okay, and you noticed the lobby, so...
Right.
All right, so then, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nisheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on, I want to say, sort of usual conditions, that the amplification, music, vibration, all that shall, shall be maintained in ways not to disturb the neighbors. So on that, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nisheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, 2019-163 B Z 678 Manhattan, Broadway, Manhattan. Ooh. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to answer the board member questions?
I do. Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. We made a submission in response to yesterday's review session. We're handing out copies of the amended plans. In addition, we're handing out a copy. I know it was something that said may not be needed, but we did do the lobby posting. We have the affidavit in the pictures. We submitted to the board, and we're handing copies up... to the board, and we'll hand copies up for you. The only question really yesterday was with regard to showing an egress plan for the first floor, we've provided it, amended the plans accordingly, just that sheet A003, this building has a fire stair at the rear that exits into an alley behind the building, and at the front, there's a staircase that exits from the president, from the commercial lobby, the communal lobby, out to the front of the building. The only other question I think was why I used a portion of the second floor as opposed to the entirety of the second floor, as noted, there's a resident, there's a communal lobby, so I discounted for that, we don't use the entirety of that for our own purposes.
I thought, isn't this one we asked about ADA access?
Oh, yeah, apologies, we actually, in the code, there's a section, if you're doing the, there are two sections that say that that step at the front can remain and that we only have to modify our space, and it's something that we've seen a number of times with PCEs in existing buildings, if you're with, if you're more than 18 inches above grade, and you're only changing the use of that space, you don't have to change it, and if the cost is less than 10%, the cost of the improvement is less than 10% of the assessed value of the building, you don't have to make the change at that first level, but everything within your space as it is on our plans has to be, has to be ADA compliant, which we are.
So then, so if it's ADA compliant, it's kind of ironic if they can't get there, so what do they do?
There's an elevator in this building, which a lot of the PCEs we've worked on that fall in this, don't have elevators, here there happens to be an elevator, there are those two steps, you know, I admit there's, that's a problem, but...
So, so how, how do they deal with it is the question, so having an elevator building, so we're into, it's a different thing than building code here, right? For these PCEs, we want them to be accessible, right? So there needs to be some sort of program where the building makes it accessible.
So I'm sure that there's some sort of portable ramp that they do use or can use to get in.
How are you sure?
This is a commercial building that is occupied fully, so, you know, under code, you may not have to change it, there has to be a way that, if you know someone who has a disability wants to come take a class, then you'll make arrangements with them.
So how does that person communicate?
They can call the gym, a lot of them de-reserve, when you go to a class like this, they do a reservation.
So let's just back up, okay, so when we've had these cases, because we've had a few, there's a sign that's posted at the entrance to the gym that says, if you need assistance, call this number, press this buzzer, right?
We can do that, and we can put it on the website as well, when they, because a lot of times they'll reserve space for the class on the website, we can add that to the website as well.
Okay, so this is a legalization, you have to do it now.
Okay.
So, anything else?
I mean, I can, I can try and second call this and see if they'll post a picture on, post a sign on the wall.
No, 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 it doesn't work like that, you get a sign made, you put a sign on, wherever it is you put a sign, I, I don't have the drawing in front of me to like where this is. Generally at, at the wheelchair eye level. Yes, at wheelchair eye level, there's the phone number to call, and if it's reachable, there's also a buzzer, a bell, you push, and the bell rings down, just in case a person A doesn't have a phone, or it's out of battery, or whatever, you push a button, and it, somebody from downstairs will come up and help you. Upstairs, break down. I mean, from up, yeah, sorry, yeah, second floor, coming down.
I'm just trying to see if there is place for sunlight, and I think the way to achieve it would be through the website, because that's the method that people do.
No, 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 it's not through the website, it's a person who maybe is coming because they want to see what a bar class is like, or they decided to see if they have maybe an available space at the class today, or, that's how you go to the gym, right?
Not these gyms, these gyms are done through...
Actually, it is these gyms, because they take bar classes, you go...
You can, but primarily they'll do it that way, so I would think, all right, it's fine, I understand the board's...
For one, it's not accessible like that, the idea that you must go onto a website and all that, other people call, you just call to make a reservation, they don't go online and book.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, so, what do you think?
Would they need landmark approval to put up this?
You might.
We can post it on the inside of the door, I don't think. It's a clear door, all right?
What'd you say?
We'll figure it out.
Because we don't have an elevation, I don't think of the first floor here.
We have photographs of the first floor, showing that, that floor.
There also isn't...
We have an elevation of the first floor on sheet A003.
There's no plan that shows your egress route, I had asked for that.
There is, sheet E003.
Oh, there is? E003 is on this, oh, okay. Is this something that was submitted recently?
Yesterday, that's why I brought the plans in.
I didn't get that, I don't have one.
Oh, okay.
I bought, I bought seven copies, so...
You would share mine, but your bedroom is not, exactly.
Right. I'm, I'm sure you can put it, there's glazing, it looks like, on the first floor, oh, wait a minute, you're going to the elevator lobby, yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure that there's a place really to put a buzzer, because that would need...
There is a buzzer, right?
There's a buzzer there, but is it an intercom?
It's a buzzer for the building, so the second floor, you'll have a buzzer that opens up, that you'll buzz in the second floor.
No, my question is, is there an intercom? A buzzer is different than an intercom.
Looks like it.
So you buzz me in, and then there I am, sitting there, what am I supposed to do? I can't go upstairs.
Can you, can they hear you?
I, that's the intercom question, I don't know the answer to it, but we'll find out, usually yes, but I'll find out.
I mean, if you have a buzzer, there might be a space below that where you can put that note with the phone number.
Right, that's the note with the phone number, I'm saying that on other ones, we have, that there's a bell, which is enough, because everyone knows that the reason that you're pushing the bell is because you need help to get in, in this situation, you're using a buzzer to get, to be buzzed in to the building so that you can go upstairs for the class, so how does anyone know that you need help?
And the buzzer height generally tends to be higher.
Is there room for another buzzer on there?
Nope. Right. Okay, so anyway, so you need to work this out, you can't assume access to the website, you can't, and to the extent it's possible, if there's an intercom, which would be the best solution?
I don't know if that's available, but we may be a sign on the door saying, if you need assistance, call for assistance. I just, I don't know what the system is, so I don't know.
Right, I know, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Madam Chair. So the key, the A04, 004 has the attenuation notes, I know this is kind of a...
It has a one, I'm sorry.
The S, A004 has the sound attenuation notes? I don't think they're keyed into A002, unless you don't care, I mean, because it's form as it is.
No, we have a legend at the bottom right that says it's isolated sound acoustic area, which shows on the plan.
You have a legend, but you don't...
No, it shows on the plan.
Where?
If you look, there's a squiggly line.
Oh, the 002?
Yeah, squiggly line.
Oh, the isolated sound acoustic thing? Where's it, in here, though? You put a squiggly line here, but where's it in here?
Look at the perimeter of the studio space.
Oh, there it is, okay. Say what?
Just quickly, the isolated sound acoustic area.
No, but she's talking about the details.
Yeah, A004.
Type seven, partition, et cetera, et cetera, are those...
On A002, should, maybe?
No.
No?
This is, I mean, this architect, I've done a lot of gyms with him in front of the board, and this is the way we always do it, we haven't had a problem, the board wants me to change it, we can.
No, 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 that's not true, we key all of our details into the drawings, that, that's actually how it has to be done, otherwise, these things have no meaning, right? Unless it tells you where they go on these drawings.
Well, it shows the, the legend with the squiggly line around the studio shows where it is.
But there are different details. Wait, studio, I'm just reading the notes, Studio A and B are surrounded by isolated acoustic wall partitions as shown at, in detail four and five, so if we look at four and five, and then look at Studio A and B, so according to that note, Studio A and B are both surrounded by details four and five, then we have details one and two, Studio, the ceiling in Studio A and B is hung with kinetic ICW hangers as indicated in detail one, so that covers the ceiling, and then we have detail two, which maybe we don't care, no idea where detail two goes. So maybe the distinction is just, detail two is just regular hung ceiling that goes everywhere else, I mean, it's not a very good way of doing it, but I think that covers it.
I have another suggestion, that nowadays we have the wireless doorbell, and that is very easy to use, you just, you know, I think you, you're within the reach, I'm just doing a quick Google on some of these materials.
Yeah, we use...
A wireless doorbell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem, I have to, if the building will let us do it, I have no problem, that's the only question, I mean, the building has to tell us where and how, and we'll give you suggestions.
The same one like I have in the office, press the button?
Yeah, I know, I have, that's fine, I have, it's no problem, I'll figure it out.
Can you, can you have the architect check that number, the 97 four inches, and make sure that it's...
Which number?
The distance between exits.
The travel distance?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't believe 97 is the broken line, I, I, my God, it is, it is horizontal.
I'll have them confirm.
Yeah, because if the, if the entire building is 125, then...
Distance between exits.
From the exit to the exit horizontally is about 100.
As the cross.
Probably slightly less.
How, what's the distance shown, 97?
Total, total building, if you look at the dimension line, is 125, 10 inches?
Yeah.
Wall to wall outside is, is about 130, let's say, then if you look at from the exit to the exit, is probably 100, slightly less than 100.
And I think...
So 100 plus, the vertical portion, which is about 15 feet, should be, it should be on the order of 115 to 120.
So, and I think the, but so there are two means of egress, so you can split it, so I think that, I think that the travel distance is 125 feet, I think? Right, something like that? So if you split it, I, I think it's from the remotest corner to, and egress, not to both egress.
On sheet A002, it says max natural unobstructed travels 150, provided 141 from point A to point E, which is the max from corner to corner.
Okay.
No, no, I'm just talking about the dimension, if, if this is not 97 four inches, I will correct it.
I can have them confirm.
Okay. Okay. So that's the main thing, to install the, the route, I mean, the contact, and show us pictures, okay? We have used those remote buzzers before, wireless buzzers.
I've honestly never had this, I've had buildings like this, and I've never had this come up at a hearing, so I understand, and I'll try and resolve it. I can do this very quickly, and it's a single item, you know, I know the board is...
I don't know if very quickly helps you. This is it for...
It's just the accessibility issue.
It's just giving pictures of the buzzer and explaining it.
And adding a note to the website.
Yeah, the accessibility.
A website isn't like an architectural solution, it's not like...
No, but it's both.
Right, yeah, I would just rather see an ADA sign on the window and a...
And a phone number?
And a phone number, and buzzer, if you can do a buzzer, right?
No problem.
Website. Okay, so...
So we've, we've done in the past, I don't know if the board still do, does this, like, leave the record open for a day or for a couple hours, and I'll, and I'll submit the picture that it was...
No, no, it can't be like a photo, it needs to be going out and getting a sign, having a sign actually made, so it withstands the rain and so on, so it's a pla, it's a, some kind of little plastic or, or metal sign with an ADA symbol on it, and a phone number that says, "For access, please call."
Understood, no problem.
And it's related to the logo of the gym, because in this case, it's obviously the gym itself that needs to, so it's, it's not a paper solution, it's a permanent solution.
Okay, we will have a sign shown on the plans.
Yeah, and the sign should be shown on the plans.
Okay, a submission date of November 6th, with a continued hearing on November 26th.
On November 26th, thank you very much.
Item number six, 2019-164BZ, 9 East 16th Street, Manhattan. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to asking the board member questions? Yeah, thank you. Change your life, great galaxy.
Jay Goldstein for the applicant, we attended yesterday's review session, we did do the lobby posting, we submitted copies of it to the board, and we do have the SLA permit, which is what I just handed out to you now, the reason the community board waived it, because the community board heard this during the SLA process, a lot of same members, and they decided that they had enough information to waive their recommendation to the SLA. But other than that, we've had no issues or complaints regarding...
When did you do the lobby postings?
October, also October 18th, or something like that. So we, we did the lobby posting, we have the SLA permit, and we have not had any issues with regard to unruly or, you know, drunken behavior on the streets, because honestly, after a class like that, I don't know how much people are actually able to stand, let alone, you know, to...
The guy in the article and inside wrote...
It's, these are intense classes, but the, you need a catch, you need something to bring people in, so this is their, their catch.
People don't go in to take the class that's a killer, instead they want to go in and have a...
Obviously not a fitness expert.
Okay, we did what we could do, right? There's only one person who complained about drinking on the street, that could be a condition, you have to keep your patrons inside the building, right?
But there's a steakhouse on the ground floor, so...
That doesn't mean people are drinking outside the building, steakhouse.
They're in blue blankets.
We don't know.
Shorts, I don't know. It, it can be a condition, no problem, I have no problem with that condition.
Okay. You know, and with these postings on the lobby, there's no dates, of the date of the posting provided, I think we need to change the...
Provided in the affidavits.
No, I know, but I think we should change the notice, so it has the actual date on it somehow, so when we see the photo, we know that it's posted as of that date.
Are you going to time it, are you going to prove that, listen?
That's why we give you the...
Stand there in front with a newspaper.
Newspaper and a photo. That's why we... That's why we give you an affidavit, a sworn affidavit.
I could bring Sunday's paper and stand there.
But that's why we give you the sworn affidavit.
Or you could do your cell phone, maybe. Cell phone, put your cell phone, right?
Counsel has a point. It is a sworn affidavit.
It's the best we got right now, so...
If they're willing to line a sworn affidavit, they're willing to circumvent otherwise.
Yeah, that's true.
Beginnings.
Wouldn't be the first time. Okay, okay.
Someone works for ransom.
Oh, and that was the other thing. The hours until midnight.
It's legalization and it's operational, and we have, I don't know if anyone's here to speak in opposition, but we've, you know...
Could we do something like they stop serving alcohol at a certain point or something like that?
Not even in the bar that they stop at 12 o'clock.
That went through vetting at SLA as well.
Oh, it did.
The times, so we have...
Or the deafening electronic dance music? Till midnight?
For these two, the latter is better.
Sorry?
For these two, the what?
The alcohol and the music. The latter is better.
Right.
Yeah, you don't know whether the latter is better.
It's also not, it's not an open bar. It's closed to people who take the class. So you don't have people coming off the street to drink at midnight. You have people who took the class who are afterwards, you know, not able to walk home, so let's drink.
All right, that's pretty crazy. So it's rare that we have such late gyms, though. Our gyms typically close at like 10, hours like that, not midnight.
You have 24 hour...
Twenty-four. Oh, we do have some 24 hour...
You have 24 hour fitness. You have other ones that run seven days a week at 24 hours.
I don't think the board is concerned about the gym activity as much as the other activity that's been approved by SLA.
Yeah, no, it's not so much that. For me, it's the, when the guy in the article says it was deafening electronic dance music.
Again, this is legalization. We did do a box within a box construction. Spent a lot of money on the soundproofing.
Did the question of, did the question of music come up with the, in the state legal authority?
I don't, it was just handed to me.
The hours being a condition?
Shell delivered it to.
Till midnight?
But they can't exceed that.
That's not much of a limit. That's a very limited minute. I mean...
We could do the standard language, where we say, like, to, like, ensuring that there aren't complaints in...
Speak up.
We have standard language that we use, ensuring that there aren't complaints.
Noise and vibration.
Yeah. Okay.
We're going to, we're going to grant either way in conditions regarding noise and vibration, right?
Yes.
So if something happens...
All right.
Bring him back.
Yeah. Okay. Any speakers on this one? No? Okay. No, we do have fire department. All right, so then a motion to close. Oh.
Tony? No, I'm sorry. I was reading, I was looking at the business system, and there were complaints about accusing in May that they were running a nightclub, the owner of the restaurant or something at night.
They were.
Not open, but I was just reading the violations. Motion to close, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the usual condition that the operation shall maintain noise and vibration levels so as not to interfere with the quiet of the upstairs neighbors.
Peaceful, quiet enjoyments.
Yeah, quiet enjoyment of their own premises.
Not violating quality of life.
And also patrons inside?
Oh, yes. And that the patrons must be made, kept inside the space. Yes. Or not hanging out on the sidewalk, or is that...
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashibeta?
Aye.
Item number seven, 2019-178BZ, 1426 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to any board member questions?
Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I heard the comments yesterday, and I think it's classified, submit on whether...
Great. Okay.
I missed the three o'clock one. Just trying to get us out of here.
Submission date December 24th with a continued hearing on January 14th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number eight, 2019-9BZ, 468 Targi Street, Staten Island. Sign up. Yeah. Measure right hand. Do you affirm self-truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to any board member questions?
Sure.
Okay. Proceed.
Stephen Simisich for the applicant. I attended review session yesterday, and at the outset, I just wanted to mention that I've already gone ahead to order a 1961 owner report in order to face the threshold question about ownership at that time. I know this was brought up yesterday. In addition, a certified tax map will be obtained to show that the lot was not subdivided and the unique size wasn't self-created in order to face head-on the threshold issues that were brought up.
So it's not just the size of the tax lot, because that we can see from our own research. It's whether, the question is always whether it was held in common.
Yes, and I, the title report from that date will answer that question, so...
Okay. So as a, you know, alert, alert, danger, danger kind of thing, you provided us with a deed that says that in 1980, I think it was five, lots 69, 70, and 73 were held in common. And it was, that was a transfer to the property owner of those three lots in tandem. So it's not clear to me when they were subdivided, but it seems as if they were owned in common in 1985. So now what do you do about self-created hardship?
Well, from the reading of 2333...
No, that's not what you should be doing.
You're talking about the section B, part B of the zoning lot?
No.
Definition.
What we're talking about is the following. So there's one subject about whether you're allowed to build as of right on a substandard sized lot, which is in the zoning resolution under whatever that section, whatever it is. Anyway, 23 something.
2234.
What, 23?
I believe 2333, you said?
Possible, yeah. I just can't find it now. So that's a test for whether or not you can build as of right on a substandard lot. Your request here is for a variance. And it's, and you don't really need a variance of whether or not you can build on a substandard lot, because you're entitled to that under that section, right? You're asking for a variance of side yard, right? In order to qualify for a variance, you have to make the five findings, one of which is that you didn't, that the hardship complained of was not created by the owner or predecessor entitled.
Yes.
So here we have potential of the hardship having been created by the predecessor entitled who owned all three lots together at least as late as 1985, if not 10 years later, when the property was partly conveyed. I think in 1995, two of the parcels were conveyed away. So you, then you would have to demonstrate that you didn't create the hardship. Not sure exactly how you do that, in part because if you just talk about the other sites that you're using to prove uniqueness here, you're saying, oh, the, all of these other sites in the neighborhood are excluded from, from being considered unique, uniquely burdened, because even though they're small, they're held in common with another property next door, which, which is used for like a parking lot or something, right? So that appears to have been the case as late as 1985, if not 1995. That, that's your problem.
Well, I would, I would think, and that's what I'm going to attempt to do with the next submission, is that the updated title report from the 1961 date, and then also the certified tax map will show that what, what matters here is what the case was on December 8th, 2005.
You're missing, no, no, you didn't hear anything I just said. Let's try this again. Listen, okay? The zoning resolution, section 23, maybe 36, I'm not sure. Somebody could find it.
33.
33. 2333 says, if you have a lot that is substandard, smaller than what's required in this zoning district, you can build on that lot as of right if the lot was separately owned, individually and separately owned as of 2005. Listen.
Yes.
That's what it says, you can do as of right. So go ahead, build something as of right. Once you come here, you are asking for a variance under 7221. A variance under 7221 requires that you find that the property is unique, that it suffers a hardship that prevents you from realizing a return on your investment, or in this case with houses, it's kind of a little bit of a different standard, which we never understood. Reasonable use. Reasonable use. And the neighborhood, there's a neighborhood character finding, and that the variance is the minimum variance needed to grant relief, but the hardship complained of cannot have been created by the owner or a predecessor entitled. The zoning resolution as to 7221 was written in 1961. So we say anytime prior to 61, it needed to have been held separately and individually. Otherwise, the hardship complained of was created by the owner. And so I don't know what to do about this. You provided us with a deed that showed in 1985, the property was held in common with two other much larger tax lots. So the subdivision created the hardship complained of. And, you know, you can check the title again if you want to do that, but then I don't really know why, because you gave us a deed that shows that there was held in common. So you can check it again to verify that your materials were not incorrect, but 61, pre-61 is your test. You're going to find was held in common ownership pre-61.
But I think the 23-33 part B also says for lower density growth management area, which this site is, where December 8th, 2005 is the applicable.
Yeah.
Why isn't anyone understanding what I just said?
It's because they're asking for a variance.
It's not about whether...
Yeah, it's not about this.
No, so it's not 1961.
Right. So it's 1961 and 2005, right? But the issue is not whether anything can be developed, it's whether the sort of refusal to develop and the subdivision that happened constitutes a self-created hardship. And, yeah, the board has gone over this with many cases.
So it's not the threshold finding, it's the deed finding? Yes. Yes.
So the, the specific dates on, don't, I see what you're saying. Exactly. They don't count anymore in the sense that we need to look back and see if a predecessor entitled at any point. Okay.
And so, because you're not asking to waive the minimum lot size, you already qualify under 23, whatever it was, 33.
33, yeah.
You already qualify, so you're only asking to waive the side yards. And I appreciate that maybe you might need side yard waivers, which is a point that Commissioner Asheta made, maybe don't, right? So, but the first thing is, if you look at your own uniqueness study, you yourself, your own consultant, your own data says, I'm unique because I don't own any properties in common like those guys down the street. All those guys own property in common with their neighbor, so they don't suffer a hardship. Well, apparently, you own, your client owned properties in common with the neighbors until something like 1995. So could have developed the property, subdivided in a different way, plus that was another question that we were looking at, that the size of the tax lot 73 looks like it changed. If you just look at the configuration on the Sandborn map, it looks like the lot line might have moved. So that, that's another thing. So that makes it even less, even more of a self-created hardship. So, and, you know, what was hap, what happened is lot 71 was subdivided into two lots in So it was an opportunity to merge lot 71 with lot 73 and make two larger lots, which it opted not to do. Okay, so you have a pretty big hurdle for this. And in, and because I can't think of a possible solution, in some cases where we see these kind of subdivisions occur, we say, prove to us that you would never have been able to use this lot back in the day before it was subdivided. But I don't think you're going to be able to prove that, because the lot was so big. We have it with very small sites that get subdivided into smaller sites. Okay?
Where the joint lots would suffer the same hardship.
Yeah, exactly.
If they were together.
Here you have a very lot, we know it didn't suffer the hardship, because lot 71 was developed with a new building in like 2010 or 2011.
Oh. Okay. Well, being that this said, that there's no reason really to discuss any of the other issues in regards to the CB and all, because this hurdle needs to be faced.
Yeah.
So I will talk to the team in regards to title report, certified tax map, and anything else that's possible to respond.
But if you miraculously find something, then do answer the other questions, the most important of which is, well, change in the lot configuration needs to be adjusted because, addressed, because it seems quite odd. And then the other was, we need to see if, if you get past that hurdle in your own head, like that you believe you've established somehow, then we do need to see as of right drawings.
Yeah.
Or plans. Okay? Okay. And of course, we need a new objection.
Oh, yeah. Can you please clarify in regards to that? I just couldn't see why, why the new objection.
I don't think you want us to clarify that in the public record, so you can speak to counsel about it.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Are we done?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, I know you have second call. I'm just saying for this.
Submission date February 5th with a continued hearing on February 25th. Okay.
Is this one that had a house on it before?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
This one is...
Another aspect that you might want to look at is article...
Come back to the...
Another aspect that you might want to look at is article five of the zoning resolution, specifically, I believe, section 5441 with respect to existing non-compliant residences that are only non-compliant as to bulk and permitted reconstructions. And you may wish to look into whether you have an as of right option for demonstrating non-compliances that existed, because I believe one of your Sandborn maps shows an existing dwelling on the premises. And so as long as the use is still conforming...
Okay.
You might look into whether you have an as of right option here.
Okay, thanks. So I'll look further.
And when, when Mr. Steinhaus says look into, that would be to submit an application to DOB to build essentially what you're seeing in that Sandborn map.
Yes.
And if you can find old drawings, that would be even better, you know, actual drawings, and submit a new house that looks just like that one with the same non-compliances as that one, and then add stuff, because if it's not non-compliant, you can make the house bigger, right? As long as it's complying with the front yard, setbacks, and all of that. So maybe it's a little bit of a step building, and you actually submit that to DOB and see what they say.
Okay.
And as discussed, it looks like the premises complies with the sort of single and separate small, existing small lot provision.
Yes.
Yeah.
But is this doable with the...
And as discussed, it looks like the premises complies with the sort of single and separate small, existing small lot provision.
Yeah.
But is this normal with the change in the lot configuration?
So, that's a good point, so, no, but it had to have been the lot configuration as of 2005, right? So we're not talking about a variance anymore in this conversation, we're talking about trying to do an as of right project that meets the 2005 cutoff date, where the configuration of the lot was the configuration in 2005, and was separately owned in 2005, which is very recent, so that's easy, right? And then applying to basically replicate that house.
The one on the Sand.
The one on the Sandborn map, and if you can, if there's even old drawings, because it was demolished in the 80s, I think, I forget, anyway, and if you can actually replicate that house, and then you could add to it, as long as it complies with current zoning, and, and go to DOB, and based upon that section 54.
5441, which is entitled permitted reconstruction.
And if you have further questions about that, please speak to our counsel.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any speakers?
Thank you.
Second call item, item number 23, 2018-193BZ, 1389 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. No, you're already on those, so.
Hello again, Lyra Altman, the office of Lyra Altman. We have now received and forwarded to submit and to your counsel, Mr. Vine, a copy of a revised zoning sheet, and a revised set of plans reflecting the correct 130 in the existing column for OSR, 61 in the proposed column for OSR, and 59.33 in the compliance column for.
Can anyone see that?
Chase has got it.
It's certainly sent, and I checked to make sure, just so you know, I compared my cover letter from the last submission to this set of plans, and made sure all of those corrections were on there, to try to verify that the architect sent me the correct set of plans.
Always. Have to give us a minute.
Take your time. Can you see it by any chance? Did it come up on yours?
No, it didn't show up on mine, but Chase is looking.
I see the ones that are in 61.
I'd say you'd like to see it.
It's not much of a size.
From 1964.
Do you want to see, I don't know, the zoning column of plan?
Yes, I see. Just click it. The small one? This one? Okay, and we're looking for, it's a say, we're looking at the lot coverage.
OSR should say 130 existing, should say 61 proposed, and 50.
No, it does.
59.33.
Wait, wait, wait. R2, OSR says 150 required.
Right.
130 existing.
Right.
61 proposed.
Correct.
Non-compliant by 59.33%.
That is correct.
Whatever, we don't know.
The open space ratio required is 150%, so it would be more like 59%.
Well, what we did was we took the difference.
That's why I didn't understand when the math was done at 60.
What we did was we took the difference, just like we do always, we took the difference between the proposed and the allowable, and we divided, that's to determine the compliance column.
This isn't, okay, so the 59 is not the.
It's not the difference.
Fraction between.
Correct, it's not the difference between the two, it's the percentage that it's off.
Yes, it's the percentage by which it's non-compliant supposedly.
Yes.
But the percentage would be like 89%.
What it is, it's the difference between 150 and 61, divided by 150.
Yeah, 89% is a difference, right? Anyway, I just have to say this, we don't submit this document to DOB, right?
It's corrected on the plans as well, if you'd like me to get that.
And the plan does not have the.
The percentage.
No, it doesn't, it's actually.
It just says 61 is the proposed, right? Sorry, the screen is just, we're going to need to hear this out better for.
What we've always done, it helps at all, not necessarily for open space, just for all of these, for instance, the rear yard, you take 30 minus 20, which is 10, you take that difference of 10, you divide it by the allowable, which is 30, and that's when you get the compliance column. Well, that's, that's a normal way to get a percent. Exactly what we did here. Okay, because, but the problem is, nobody knows how to calculate the open space ratio, right? So. I calculated it for you.
Okay.
That's blown up on the bottom of the proposed first page, and the existing set is also, and they're also corrected.
89 over 150.
Which is 50.
I think there are, my sort of source of confusion would be that if the open space ratio was 150, and then you're actually having more floor area, then you need to provide, so I, I understand how you calculated.
Yeah, yeah, the, the point, that's what I was saying before, you need to have 4,000 square feet of open space for, sorry, 6,000 square feet of open space for a 4,000 square foot building, so you're so far away from any, it's 150%.
Yeah, it's a function of floor area, which, floor area changes, so the calculations are all based on different things, understood.
There's no way to realistically put the deviation